Commissioner of City, Republican Republican Commission meeting Tuesday, March the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order at six ten P M. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Vice Mayor Mervin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, I want to thank and praise you, God, for this day, for this is the day, God, that you have made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. Father God, as we come and do the business of the city, God, we ask you, oh God, to give us direction and give us wisdom, oh God. We thank you, oh God, for everyone here that's present here tonight. God, we ask you, oh God, look upon us, God, and keep us safe, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pray to be just to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, City Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney. And Acting City Clerk is present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff. And most importantly, thank each of our residents for being here this afternoon to participate in our regularly scheduled meeting of March twen- March fourteenth. And at this time, just a quick housekeeping. We passed an ordinance at our last commission meeting, and it's for the rules and procedure of our conduct in our meeting that only includes the residents, staff, also Commissioners. So we're gonna ask you to please follow those guidelines that we have put forth so we can have a more productive commission meeting. At this time, we would have the first item on the agenda as the, in addition to the agenda, City Manager.
No, sir.
Thank you. City Commissioner, having heard no addition to the agenda, we've all received our agenda. What is your pleasure?
We have moved that we will accept the agenda for tonight's meeting.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the acceptance of the agenda as presented. Call for questions. Hearing Honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next on the agenda will be public comments, public service announcement, presentation, proclamation, if any. This is a part of the agenda where our residents can have an opportunity to make comments before the City Commission. Just wanna ask that you would come up when your name is called and state your name and your address. We're gonna give you three minutes. Please. City Clerk, at this time, are there any citizen comments card completed?
Yes, sir. The first person is Ms. Annie Eifel.
All right. Annie Eifel, Healthier Glades, Belklake, Florida. I am here tonight to give the City Commission some updates in terms of some upcoming events that are happening in your community. First, I want to talk about the youth summit that is gearing to take place April twenty-ninth at Palm Beach Central High School. PBSO has been doing this virtually for the past two years, and this is the first year that it's coming back in person. And we're trying to get as many Glades students to come out to participate in the youth summit. I did give the City Manager a copy of the flyers, and I also have some in the back for those who may be interested. I am working with the Parks and Rec to see if we can get some kids from Pahokee to attend. They're looking for middle and high school students. And so I've reached out to Mr. Williams and Ms. Dean to see about how we can go about doing that with Healthier Glades offering some support to get the kids to and from. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. The next thing I want to talk about is, March is our Let's Move campaign. This is a month-long campaign where we're trying to encourage residents to be active and participate in some type of physical activity. Last Wednesday, we hosted our first Let's Move dance party as our Zumba session, and we had a couple of folks from the community that attended. We're getting a lot of response about folks wanting to see this happen more often, and so I am talking with Parks and Rec to see how to make that possible. We have, we're gonna be offering four Zumba sessions in the month of March. The next one is tomorrow at six o'clock at Parks and Rec in the senior room. And so it's for one hour, and Ms. Leah Dean is facilitating those sessions. And then the last thing I want to talk about is, the month of May is Get Your Green On for Mental Health Awareness and Trauma Informed Care Month. Last Thursday, I had a chance to attend the community conversation that was had with the Boys and Girls Club about the bullying that's been going on in the schools with the youth, as well as the young lady who committed suicide. And so one of the things we're trying to do is, we're having some conversations of how to bring that conversation to the other communities of South Bay and Pahokee. And so my leadership team has asked Healthier Glades to take the lead in terms of trying to make sure that all communities are having that conversation. And so the other thing we're gonna also be doing in the month of May is also offer mental health first aid training. If you know about CPR, it's almost like CPR for mental health. One of the things we're realizing is, we need to make sure that our residents are aware of how to support someone if they're going through a mental health crisis. That it's not for you to diagnose, it's not for you to treat, but it is a way for you to see if there's something going on with someone that, you know, someone who's always happy, all of a sudden is down, and, you know, how do you support that person? So I'll be bringing more information today at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person.
Annie.
Ms. Eifel.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Did you, did you wanna set up a date for April for the event though? For the same thing that they did in, in the Boys and Girls?
So, um, just.
I know you wanted to do it again.
So I did get a chance to talk a little bit with my co-chair, Ms. Angela Mitchell. And so we've been, what we found out is Guardians of the Glades is also trying to do some follow-up sessions, so I have reached out to Guardians of the Glades to see how Healthier Glades and Guardians of the Glades could collaborate on this, so that way we don't have two different things going on at the same time, when we could pull our resources together. But outside of that, in regards to the mental health first aid, we will be offering that one in April and one in May. Right now, I'm working on securing locations, but the one in April will probably be in Pahokee, and the one in May will be in South Bay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Ms. Dorothy Williamson.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Dorothy Williamson. I live at two-two-three South Barfield Highway, and my concern is, when I walked out my door Monday, and how I seen everything was like described. And I was, I was upset what was going on. It was told to me that they came around last year and passed that notice, well, letting Barfield know what was going on. But I wasn't aware of that. I didn't get no notice or nothing. Yes, I was. I was very upset when I walked out my door Monday and I seen how everything was. But I just wanna know, can we please get a speed bump on Barfield Highway? They come through there like ninety-five. You see dust flying everywhere, everywhere. And it's so bad. So I did get a chance to talk to the guy that who over the crew. So he was explaining to me that they did send that flight. So he talked to someone, said they did send that flight, and I told him, I said, "Sir," I said, "If they did, I was working. And if they did, they should have put one, you know, in the door." So I just wanna know, is the city gonna be responsible by putting my fence back up? The mailbox, the mailbox haven't been tucking down yet, but the guy told me that they is gonna take the mailbox up? That the city gonna replace the mailbox? And I told him, I said, "No, I want my original mailbox up, that the one that I bought for myself, 'cause that's the one I like." So we just asking other cities of Barfield, can y'all please help us? Their water, they need to water the road more, which they did. They got, you know, a little bigger can, bigger than the one that they been have. But their water, their road need to be watered down constantly. I'm telling y'all, not just exaggerate, I'm telling y'all, the dust is so bad. It's real bad. And if a person have allergy, they couldn't make it, they couldn't make it on Barfield Highway. So that's all I wanna say, and I'm just asking y'all, Mr. Mayor, y'all, everybody's up there, can we get a speed bump?
I'll call James tomorrow and speak with him on what we can do in maybe asphalt-type or maybe a plastic speed bump. So I'll speak with Mr. Washington, the superintendent of the site, for you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a specific direction, the speeding, or is it in both directions?
In both directions, in both. I'm telling you, sir, they come down that road like ninety-five. And when you look back, you think you're in the wild, wild west.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, may I, may I ask you? Could we get a speed trap set up, uh, PB? All right.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Love, you out of order, sir.
You gonna do that all night?
No, I'm gonna throw you out.
I didn't say anything. You gonna throw me out? You, come on, I'm waiting till I get to, I'm gonna, be quiet till I get up there.
In addition to comment card, City Clerk.
Keisha Williams.
Hi, how y'all doing? My name is Keisha Williams. I stay at two-thirty-one South Barfield. I just wanna talk about what Ms. Gail was talking about. The thing is, they say they gave us a notice and everything. I've been living there ever since two thousand and seven. I haven't had a notice, nothing about what was going on on Barfield. All I knew was, they were supposed to build a apartment complex. That's all I knew. I didn't know the road was getting done, I ain't know none of that. But the thing is, I feel like if they would have said something to us, so we can be prepared, 'cause even like going out my back gate, the gate, I didn't make the gate for my car. I made the gate so I'll be walk, be able to walk out and get stuff. I scratched my car trying to squeeze through to protect my car from all of dust and then get in and out, because you, they block the road. Can't even get in or out. So that's my concern. And then apartments across the street. I wanted to know too, about apartments across the street. Are they low income? Are they Section A or something like that? I just wanted to know, so I know how to prepare myself for that of who's gonna move across the street. And another thing is, with the sidewalks, they putting the sidewalks in, it looks like it's gonna look good. But my problem is, is when it rain, the way they taking up the driveway and putting it in, my house sit like on the hill. So if it rains, the way the driveway looks like it's gonna be, all the water's gonna sit right there in my yard. So is it any way we can get like muck out there? I build it up myself, but put some muck out there for us, to build up our land, because that, I know that's gonna be like a sink, a sink-in for the, for the rain. Plus, what Ms. Gail was talking about, about the speeding. I called the police station two or three times. They said they was gonna come out, they was gonna monitor that road. I call how they come up and down there. They come up and down there like it's the Grand Prix. They ride Barfield like crazy, kicking up dirt anyway, and then they can see you standing out there, instead of them slowing down? And so the dust can fall, you know, fall away or whatever. They don't do that. They speed up. It just, this road just been taking too long to fix. It's like, they don't, I seen, um, what's the company? Ranger. Fix from friend bitch, all the way to the bank. Barfield ain't done yet. And they did that in a couple days. We have to get on, if we say we love Pahokee, and this is where we live, y'all need to show it. 'Cause man, I'd be ashamed to even be up there on that panel and say, "This my city. I'm, I'm strict from serious." That's it. Show them that they just wanted to do it.
Next person is Regina Bolen.
Good evening, Regina Bolen, three-six-six South Barfield Highway. And before I start, I agree with everything they said about the speeding, and about the dust is horrible. So if you could help with that, that would be great. Tonight, I'm here to let everybody know that our county commissioner, Sarah Baxter, is holding a town hall meeting tomorrow night at six thirty, and that's gonna be at Seminole Ridge High School. So if anybody would like to come out and talk about code, it's all about code tomorrow night. So she's inviting everybody to come out, and please bring your questions about code. There's a lot going on with the truck parking, that kinda stuff. So please come out and tell her what you think. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Charles Duval, Dunia Roberts, Keith Wedgworth, Regina Bolen again, and Charlene Ford.
If it's okay, we were gonna go with Marsha Andrews. Is that all right? You take us all at once, go through?
Sounds good.
My house, my house have a lot of dust to it. I, I wonder if it was somebody that could probably come and help with, you know, getting the dust off the house, with the timeframe that they, you know, have been ripping on the road. And I also wanna talk about my vehicle too, riding up and down there. Mine's is a little bit out of the way too, and they said I'm having front-end problems when I took it in. So I wanted to, you know, mention about that. And I also wanna just try to find out if it's gonna be anything going on around for the kids for the summer. If there's some things going on for the summer, I got nine grades. I wanna make sure they in one of them programs this summer, if they done got their grades. So that's basically all I wanted to talk about, is the dust, the road, and they do speed up and down there like that. And I got a lot, a lot of dust on my house and stuff like that. If they can help with fresh and clean or something, or if I can pay for it and they reimburse me by whichever one they want, however they want it. But I do got a lot of it on my house. And they, it's going on, what, about three years they been working on the road? I want them to go ahead and finish doing their road, I really do. But that's all I wanted to say. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Thelma Freeman. The next person is Robert Love.
I hope I'm getting caught after I walk up here. I'm up, that's the way I was raised. I want y'all to hear this, before I say anything. Robert Love, twenty-six, thirty-eight, get me. Y'all hear this? Do y'all hear that?
You addressing the, uh...
I'm addressing you, 'cause you said this last year. When you got elected, you act like loving company, and all these praying people is what got you there. This, this what he said last, last time. Are you still holding this? Are you still holding up to this? Are he delivering? Y'all go to twenty-two last year when they got, when they got elected, and this what they said the first night they got up there. How low? I'm gonna cut that off right there, Keisha. Do you remember say you wanna thank love and company? Do you know who is love and company? It's not me. It's all of them praying people what you talk about. Help y'all got up there, and now you gonna turn your back on them? Do you understand that part? Do y'all understand that part, what y'all saying? When, when it was love and company, you couldn't get Bad Mervin and Bolen off of their lives. Now y'all think we the devil? How we got to be the devil in tw- in twelve months? December, March, the twentieth of last year, you got up there with all of these lives, talking about how y'all was gonna do with the community, how y'all gonna be for the community, and how y'all gonna be with the people that done got y'all elected. And then on the end, you told them a lie, you say... I want y'all to understand that. Robert Love ain't stupid. Robert Love can remember everything that's been done. And then, just like I say, when y'all got elected, y'all didn't have to give me a dime. Y'all used this, this, y'all didn't even have a platform. Nice, every time I open my mouth, I'm gonna put you out of here. You oughta be shamed. You oughta be shamed. Somebody would help you cross the bridge, and then you wanna burn the bridge down while they come on. But Keith, I love y'all. I'm gonna keep on raising hell at every meeting. Y'all ain't gonna stop me until y'all go to doing right, until y'all stand by what y'all just said the last week. Oh, them, them five hundred people that didn't vote for me, I'm gonna do more for them than they wanted more to vote for. I ain't up here to be talking about raising hell. I'm up here for sincerity to get right, and for y'all to recognize the people that voted for y'all. Y'all get them titles and who y'all think y'all is. A title don't mean anything if you ain't living up to it. Remember that. A title what y'all got, like mail, vice president, all that. It don't mean anything to me.
In addition to comments?
Yes, sir, three more. The next person is Lolita Kimes Solbers.
My name is Lolita Solbers. Our residence at two-nine-zero Parkin Court. I'm back up here to get some clarification on, just to see what's been going on with the East Lake Village. I've been having concerns about that lately. That's all I've been coming up from speaking about. So I see that you all, like I said before, put the notes on the door. Has anyone gotten in contact with the property owners out there of those houses that's falling
We give updates almost every commission meeting, and I'm sure that probably be included on the update from the city, but we try to give updates on all of our projects on a regular You was asking a question about the East Lake Village project. I was explaining to you, we give an update at each of our city commission meetings, probably that would be on there tonight, an update on that project.
Okay, but I just wanted to see, I know, because, um, once y'all put those notes on the doors by the fine, really fines. I received one time a fine for, it came certified mill for a car cover. Say, if I didn't put the car cover back on the car in a couple of days, I was gonna get fined so much, so many dollars per day. So my question is, is the property owners getting fined per day?
No.
Because mine was only a car cover. And these is houses, this village is falling down by themselves. They have trees in front of the house, you can't even see the front of the houses. I don't see no grass being, being cut, I have not seen no trees being trimmed, no anything. And it shouldn't take a person that long to come out and, if they can't come out themselves, or they can't say somebody, have somebody come out and do that. That's just a start. Cut, not cut the grass, cut the trees down. And I'm quite sure these people is not getting fined per day, because if they was getting fined per day, they would have started doing something out there, to keep from paying that much money. So evidently, these people hasn't been reached out to, from, from my understanding. That's how I see it. I don't think no one reached out to these peoples. Because you find somebody per day, this is money that's building up that y'all is collecting per day, these people would go out there and do what they supposed to do, 'cause they, they're not gonna wanna pay that type of money. So I just need some, my, my property value need to go up. I just, I got, I own two properties out there. I own a piece of land out there, and I own the land that my house is sitting on. And my property value has dropped, and I wanna back up as, as, as soon as possible. Figure, this is ridiculous. Until like she said, y'all sitting up here on this board, y'all just doing nothing that you all say y'all supposed to do.
Thank the man for your comments.
Excuse me?
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
See?
No, sir, don't say nothing. He, he...
I'm staying home tonight. You right, Mr. Dale.
He the dictator.
You right.
City Clerk, there ain't any additional comments.
Next person is Isabel McDonald.
Good evening.
My name is Isabel McDonald, and I live at one-ninety-nine North Elm Avenue, here in the quaint city of Pahokee. My concern is the fact that whenever we bring up issues in the meeting, we're not provided with follow-up information.
Yes.
Case in point, when we had the town hall meeting a few months ago, we talked about annexation, and we were told that an update would be given regarding the areas that we're asking to be annexed into the city. To this date, we haven't received an update regarding those areas. I would like to see that we have regular updates regarding this matter, and follow-up whenever there's information to be provided regarding those areas that we're looking at. Also, initially, or whenever I became aware of the ARPA funds and how they were going to be distributed, distributed rather, it was said that businesses would benefit from these funds. I learned a couple of weeks ago that businesses are not eligible, so I wanna know what criteria was put in place to exclude business owners, as I am a business owner here in Pahokee. And if I'm entitled to benefit from those funds, I would like to know how I can go about receiving that benefit. And lastly, a couple of days ago, I had the opportunity to ride down McClure Road to visit a customer that I have that lives out that way. And it's really deplorable that those roads are in the condition that they're in, because they did not get that way overnight. I would venture to say that no one on the dais has cause to go out that way unless someone calls them and they decide to respond. But it's ridiculous that we have allowed those roads in any other areas of this city to deteriorate and not be maintained as we are taxpayer citizens. and not be maintained as we are taxpaying citizens of this town. And it needs to improve. There needs to be accountability, and as a citizen, as a homeowner, as a business owner in Pahokee, I definitely would like to see some immediate improvement and more accountability in place with regards to how this place, how this city is being run. Thank you.
The last comment is from Yarnell Williams.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hopefully I can bring some, shed some light up here in this darkness. My name is Yarnell Williams. I am a product of Pahokee, and I'm just here to just kinda let everybody know the good things and the great things that is happening right now here in Pahokee and with the opportunity that I was given. I am the owner and operator of EEMC Consulting, where I assist small business entrepreneurs with basically things that they need as far as helping them to make sure that when they start their business, because one of the things that we are missing within our communities is that our businesses are missing those intricate pieces so they can continue to be sustainable businesses. And that's like knowing how to get resources or knowing where to go to get help with their taxes, knowing where to go to understand the process of a business with business banking. So I have been hosting a business mentorship collaboration. I can say that this collaboration has definitely been a successful collaboration. We have had over thirty people that attended the initial collaboration meeting. And the people in the community are hungry. They want help with their business. They want to be successful, but because they are not knowledgeable of some of the things, and they're not privy to some of the things that they should be, they are, we don't have thriving businesses. We have businesses that are suffering. We have businesses that are not able to continue or sustain because they're missing that part. And so with that being said, I was only able to have a number of ten, select ten of them, because it's me in my, in my group that actually does it. So I have professional, and I do have flyers, and you guys can have one. I have professional business owners that are accountants. I'm not talking about no itty-bitty body. I'm talking about I made sure that we in the muck had the best of the best. So we have the best of the best in the muck. A lot of our people came from this community. They are accountants. They are professional, uh, tax preparers. They are professionals, uh, business owners with, you know, insurance companies to help our businesses make sure that they maintain what they need in order to be sustainable. Again, I don't want to, I want to thank everybody first and foremost that has helped with this venture. Mr. Gonzalez, I wanna say thank you to you first because you made that connection. I wanna say thank you to Mr. Lucas because you made it happen and gave me a space to actually be able to do what I needed to do with the small businesses. I want to thank a lot of people within our community. They donated. They're hungry. Muck Tavern is one of them. I wanna call out some of the names that actually donated to make this successful. Luway, BZB Collections, Tamar Stocks, BJ Claims, Dough and Donuts, Papa Jimmy's. There were so many that actually, you know... I have to say this before I, before I know my time is up, but I have to give homage and I have to give honor to the Bolden Community Center. They have allowed me to continue, to be able to continue the services for these, um, small business entrepreneurs. They have allowed me that space, and for that alone, I am thankful and I am grateful. You guys, thank you again.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I speak more? Just for clarity on the ARPA, please, don't interrupt. You. So, I want to shed light on the ARPA on business. So, under workforce, job workforce, education, training, and business development, there will be a segment for businesses for that. There'll be out of the hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fi- forty-five dollars, eighty thousand will be earmarked for business development. In that, that's five thousand, up to five thousand dollars, divided into eighty thousand, that's about sixteen businesses we'd be able to help. So, we will get to that at our next meeting, but today's meeting, we're gonna talk about getting the nonprofits in place first to assist with some of the background things where people need assistance. Companies that will be speaking here shortly, like Career Source. So, I just wanted to put that out there, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we have two presentations. I have, uh, city managers introduce the guest speakers.
Uh, yes, sir. Starting off tonight is Glades Regional Office. Greetings from Angela Moore and Marcia Andrews. And then next up would be the summer program and job fair with Mr. Charles Duval, the Career Source Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We bring you greetings from the Glades region. We were actually scheduled to be here in September, but Hurricane Ian, I think it was, had different plans for us, so we're here tonight. We come to reintroduce ourselves to you. For those of you who we may not have had the opportunity to meet, I'm Angela Moore, and I proudly serve as the Glades Region Superintendent, serving as the supervisor over the schools in the Glades region, working alongside of Dr. Monique McTeer, who's here today as our instructional superintendent. I'm going to give her an opportunity to introduce herself as well. We also have Ms. Bolden, who is the Assistant Principal at Pahokee Elementary School. And I do apologize for the principals not being here tonight. They were scheduled to be here in September. They had agreed to be here, but I forgot to include them in the invite to be here tonight. In addition to that, we do have Mrs. Andrews, who is our District Six Board Member, as well as the representatives from the Glades Region Roundtable, the Glades Career Readiness Roundtable, as well as the Lore Group and Career Source is here tonight as well. So we're going to give them an opportunity to introduce themselves to you tonight, as well as talk to you about what they have in store for the entire Glades region.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monique McTeer. It is my pleasure to be here to speak with you today. I think there was a community member that asked what summer programs were available. I'm glad to say that Pahokee Elementary will be hosting summer school this year, and that summer school will include students with disabilities, ELL students, third grade students who are not performing well on the state test. So once again, if you have a student that's struggling academically in third grade, going to third, going to fourth, and going to fifth, they will be attending Pahokee Elementary this summer. We also have in, at Canal Point, they will be hosting their Wells Academy, and that's basically where you can get additional academic support in the summer, as well as a summer camp. So for both areas, Pahokee and Canal Point, we do have some things going on for students. And so I would like to say that during the pandemic, you know, our students struggled a little bit. That intervention and being online wasn't as easy for everyone. So please, if your student can benefit from that additional academic support, please send them. Also, we have with us today, we have the Assistant Principal of Pahokee Elementary, Mrs. Serenthea Bolden, and she will share some other information with you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you say y'all gonna be servicing kids with disabilities. Okay, will there be any nurses there? Cause I have a granddaughter that was diagnosed with type one diabetes at the age of six. Okay, by her business, so many days out of school, going back and forth to the doctor, she had to attend summer school last year. But they didn't have any nurses there to Pahokee Elementary, nor did they have to give her her, you know, shot or stuff, so...
Well, the healthcare district hadn't really made a final decision yet. However, there will be nursing support in the Glades region. And if a school needs a certain amount of support that's a little bit more, um, heavy, we can call in. So I tell you what, what does your child go to school? Pahokee Elementary? So please speak with Mrs. Bolden, and we will check on... Yeah, we'll check on your questions, and I'll get back with you.
Okay, thanks.
You're quite welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Hello, my name is Serenthea Bolden Baker. My husband told me I need to start saying that, Baker. But I'm here on behalf of Dr. Karen P. Abrams. She had a family engagement tonight, so she couldn't make it. On behalf of the faculty and staff of Pahokee Elementary School, I know almost everybody here, so you all know me. So, but I'd like to say to the, to the commission, we've seen you out. We'd like to see you a little more, if you can, to the community members. Come by, stop in and see what's going on at Pahokee Elementary and how you can support. And along with the summer programs that Dr. McTeer mentioned, we'll also have a Star Academy for Kinder through third, and a STEM Academy for fourth and fifth. We're pushing really hard to get our boys of color, our black and brown boys, to get involved in STEM, to sort of get them moving so that they can get on accelerated track in terms of math and science, so we can get some of these IB diplomas and some of these ACE diplomas. So, um, that's our goal at this point. If you should have any questions, Dr. Abrams, she has an open door policy. You stop in. No question will go unanswered. I mean, you know, we do what we do, and we'd appreciate your support. So if any of you can come out and help us out, we'd appreciate it.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
You know, they be talking about bullying in all these schools. Are we having that problem at Pahokee Elementary?
We don't have a major bullying issue, not, not at Pahokee Elementary School.
That's what I'm saying, I ain't been hearing it, that's why.
No, sir. If you have, if you ever get a chance to stop by, you'll see like we're really family oriented there. Everybody, yeah, I know. Everybody, everybody takes care of everyone. So when we get a instance where that could possibly escalate to bullying, we nip it in the bud. We call parents in, pastors in, whomever can, you know, get to the kids, we, we do it. So we don't have a major bullying issue at Pahokee Elementary School.
And I love the way y'all, they have the bullying, like awareness, how they drew it on the sidewalk. And I, I love that. When I went up there the other day, I saw them, I'm like, oh, thank you, somebody, at least somebody recognizing them, they are not just that. That's a serious problem.
It is serious.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that I even have a program for the black and brown boys. Is it just for the black and brown, or is it for anybody that's having difficulty?
Well, historically, our boys of color have not taken advantage of or been supported in advanced coursework. We have, we're in a unique situation where we have an IB elementary school, a middle school IB. So we have the PYP, the NYPD, and the IB program next door. A lot of schools don't have, a lot of cities don't have that. Kids have to get bused from one program to the next. So what we're focusing on, it's not a summer program. It's actually a school improvement initiative where we're looking at like how our boys performing. And, and the majority of our population is, um, boys of color. So we, we're pushing our boys of color into acceleration.
And so, but it is open to all students. Historically, as she said, sometimes the data hasn't been as well as it should have been for black boys, but it's open for all students. We're trying to encourage more boys of color to attend because they're not showing up. So, but it's open for everyone.
Yes. Any other questions? All right, thank you, guys.
It's truly all about the people in the classroom and doing the great jobs with our students. I'm Marcia Andrews, your school board member. And I have to say to the audience, to the mayor of our city, to our vice mayor, to the entire commission, to the administrators sitting in the front, but to everyone in here, thank you for allowing me to be your school board member one more time. I bring greetings from Superintendent Michael Burke. He say, he said he saw a lot of you in Tallahassee this past week, and he communicated with you to tell you he cares about the city of Pahokee. He is available for you at any time, and he loves you. And he wants to come and visit the community more. And this is what we're asking for. We're asking you tonight, we're asking you tonight to hear us, but we know we need to be on the ground just a bit more for the community. And I'm hearing you talk to me tonight from the community. I know that we have great schools here in Pahokee. When I think about Pahokee Middle Senior High School, a hundred percent graduation rate makes me very, very proud. We've just come out of a pandemic. We've just come out of a pandemic. And I heard somebody mention bullying too. A lot of the children have gone through some mental health issues. They were home, they did their best with the computer, but the computer is not a teacher. And the children struggled to make it back. They're finally back. The teachers have been with them all the way, but they were not with them for almost two years. And we're asking for you to give them time, commission, community, to give the children time to be able to catch up. They're going through a lot. We need the community, we need the parents, we need your help. We need to come out into the communities, into all of the neighborhoods, to tell you what we're doing. It's nice to be in here tonight, but I don't mind having a walk in all of the different communities and meeting with you face to face, to hear the kinds of questions I just heard in here tonight. And for you, you've been to the school, and you saw something that was great, and you shared that with everybody. Well, that's what I do as your school board member. I'm on the ground in the community all the time, working with the Glades Career Readiness Roundtable. Donald Roberts is here with us today. You're gonna hear from Charles Duval, who's been working with me for thirteen years. I've been your school board member, and I'm just pleased to know that they've been working. Keith Wedgworth with Lore and everybody, we've been working together because we want our children to graduate college and/or career ready. This is why, when you all elected me back in 2010, you told me to open West Tech up. And you said it had to be open. You told me that. And I got it open. It is open for all of you. But I need to take you on a tour of West Tech so you can see the programs. I need to come out into the community where I see people sitting down, just doing nothing, to tell them, we have training for you, we have jobs for you, so that you can get to work and get to another level in your life to be self-supported and happy. That's what I do for you. I may not always see you sitting in here or in this setting, but I am open and willing to do whatever it takes to get the message out that we have great schools, we have West Tech open, we wanna hear your voices, and we need to hear the bad and the good so that we can improve. I work with Regina Bolden. She's been with me for years, since 2010, working here and the commission and with the chamber on making this city great. And most of you sitting here know me. So I just wanna tell you, I'm happy to be here tonight. I'd like to get it, and, and I can't tell anybody what to do, but to the city manager, I'd like to see if we could get a listening tour so we could come to the communities. Come to the communities! Come to the communities with some of the commissioners and hear from the parents on a given time basis and let everybody know we're coming. Ms. Angela Moore and Ms. Monique McTeer, they're in charge of education. I work for you. They work for the superintendent, but I work for the mayor and all of you sitting in here. And we need you to know that we have great people, just like you heard from the wonderful Assistant Principal, who was awesome, talking about her school. It's great. I know the principals at the schools, I've been there. We're honoring Mr. Denard this week because of his great work with the IB program. All of these children graduating college and career ready from Pahokee. Canal Point Elementary School is super. If you haven't taken a walk over there lately, you need to see the things that Dr. Hippola is doing. We're getting ready to build a brand new pavilion at Canal Point Elementary School. Some of you know that. Maybe all of you don't know that. Yes, but we need to do a listening tour to tell you the good, to tell you the things we're working on, because it's truly all about our children. We can sit in here tonight as adults, but the children will pave the way. They are our future. So I thank you for voting for me again to be here with you, and I am your school board member, Marcia Andrews. Yes.
You was talking about setting up a tour of, of, of West Tech. Now that's a great idea because you know nobody ain't gonna just fall down there every other day. And you say you gonna set up a tour and set us a date. I guarantee you, I'd be on loving company every day telling us all we need to do that, 'cause that's what I've been telling people about. We need to get out of children. You know, you got some children downtown that are graduating and went nowhere, that don't know they can go out there to West Tech and get an education that's top, top education. Then you got some parents that don't know either that they can wake their son up or sleep in the bed. You going to West Tech today. See, gentlemen... See, gentlemen, you talking about doing that would need to help them, but we need to get somebody to say, let's go out there together.
Well, I'm asking the city manager and the mayor and the commission here to work with me on that. And you just elected me, I have four years to do this. And you can come back and say, Ms. Andrews, you said you were gonna get that listening tour. Listen, I'm gonna ask them to help me so we can get it done, so we can begin. I wanna meet the people that live in the community that need the help. This is where we have to be on the ground. I promise you I'm gonna work on that, thank you.
Community Action in Belgrade, they pays for these kids to, they pay for their schooling, they pay for their books. And they have programs that, my daughter went through West Tech, she got her home health aid and she get off about, she had to pay now one dollar. Community Action paid all that for her.
And I'll also add, before I begin my presentation, that Career Source additionally does that as well.
But I know I don't have that short bit of time and I love all the commissioners, they help me. But I wanna tell you, our signature CDL program at West Tech, the governor has given us money for the last three to five years. You graduate with your Class A CDL license, you can start working at seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year. You can be your own entrepreneur and all you have to do is go to school. Scholarships are available and you make more than a teacher. I was a teacher, that's where I started. But you can make a great salary and have a good life right here in the Glades region. But I won't take up all the time, I love you all so much, thank you all for having me, thank you.
Yes, Mr. DeVall kinda said it, I apologize for my voice. I wasn't sure if Mr. DeVall was gonna mention it or Ms. Roberts. But Career Source does give, provide scholarships for students, but they also just received a grant through Everglades Restoration with Loar and the Guardians of the Glades, where there are new scholarship opportunities that are gonna be coming out shortly, that ends by June 30th of this year. And so I'm gonna give you this phone number, 561-996-4900. And you can ask for Dr. Charlene Ford. And you can ask for Dr. Charlene Ford, she's the principal over at West Tech. And she can provide more information about the scholarship opportunities. And as they mentioned, for CDL, phlebotomy and forklifting, I think that's the route that they're going in for those scholarship opportunities. But we work very closely with Mr. DeVall and Career Source for those scholarship opportunities for the adults, through that program. So there are opportunities, Mrs. Andrews has been pushing for those students that you're talking about now that graduated from high school, that are looking for pathways once they graduate from high school, they don't know what they wanna do. This is one of her initiatives that she's pushed before she retires, truly retires. She wants to make sure that they have, they know what they're going to be doing. You know, finding a career path once they graduate from high school.
The lady said, Ms. Ford?
Dr. Ford.
Do you guys offer anything for the adults, for the elder adults?
Ms. Andrews.
Yes, it is for adults. We have the programs for adults as well as those that are graduating.
Ms. Andrews.
Yeah, for the senior citizens. Like, you know, maybe sewing, things that.
Yes, you would have to talk.
That they might could do at home and make their own money.
Yeah, I would still say talk to Dr. Ford because they do have those community programs, but they would be able to tell you exactly what they have available.
Ms. Andrews, what about the NCCER, how's that going? The NCCER?
Ms. Moore? We're working on that as we speak.
The follow-up on the NCCER?
Yes. What about it?
Doing a follow-up, how's that going along?
Yeah, they, if you can just follow back up with me with Dr. Ford. Because I think she did get the information regarding that as well.
Okay, appreciate it.
One of the things for the listening tour, we can offer just about anything that we need to offer if we have the interest in it. Right now, I mean, we've just worked with many of our adults who need English as a second language. We worked with the churches from Pahokee, Pastor.
Fennell.
Fennell, and you all probably know Pastor Fennell. He worked with us, we actually had, right here at the First Methodist Church. And we have about fifty adults taking ESOL. We worked with Palm Trans to get them transportation so that they could come to West Tech to learn the language. And the next step would be to get them in a career program after they go through the ELL training, English Language Learning Training. And we're working now to see how we can get childcare services. Because people do wanna go, but they have to think about their children. And we want to get a kitchen at West Tech so we can feed people, where we can take care of their children and they can get learning and skills so that they can get a job. That's my next big vision that I'm working on.
Good evening, thank you very mu- good evening, thank you very much. My name is Donia Roberts and I'm here this evening with Keith Wedgworth and we're representing Loar, Lake Okeechobee Regional Economic Alliance of Palm Beach County. The reason that we're sharing with Marsha Andrews is because together we support and work and have helped to get West Tech open and kept it open. Loar has been a strong supporter. Marsha and I both chair Glades Regional, excuse me, the Glades Career Readiness Roundtable and work tirelessly with both Dr. McNear and I always give Angela a raise and call her Doctor too, Ms. Moore. And I would just like to say real quickly, I've worked out in the Glades, my kids went to Gove Elementary, then on the SAC for over nineteen years at Gove. I have never in my life seen a better team work for our community as Marsha Andrews and Dr. McNear and Angela. They, forgive me for calling you by your first name. They are in the trenches, on the ground, whether it's COVID, whatever they're doing, they're at every meeting we have. And I'm gonna tell you that the one thing our group does, we partner with the churches, we partner with the business partners, Mr. Wedgworth of his company, private industry and government officials. And I would like to make sure that the city of Pahokee knows that we need to have you at the table at Loar. There is a seat for each one of the city managers and we need to have you there so that you can bring us projects that you need and so that we can tell you what we're trying to do in the community. So real quickly, some of the things that we are doing. Mr. Wedgworth and I both sit on the Business Development Board of Palm Beach County. Why is that important for us? Because if we didn't sit on that board, they wouldn't have a direct conduit about sharing information and making sure that they recognize us as the Glades. The other thing that we do good with West Tech is, we're with Superintendent all the time, pulling on his coattails, bringing him out here and letting him know we deserve the same services that they get over on the other side. And Charles has worked tirelessly with us as well. Some of the things that we are partnering with, with the Business Development Board, we have a very strong association with them. One of their staff members sits on the Loar board. You all are familiar with FinFROCK. So two years ago, FinFROCK was brought here. And as of six months ago, they are fully online and that is two hundred jobs and they hire local. Also, their owners, their owners sit on the board with myself and Coach Rhodes and several other people of the Boys and Girls Club here. We go to the schools, we go to Pahokee Elementary, we go to Gove Elementary and we give books out to kids. So they are invested in our community, a win-win. Thank you to the Business Development Board and also with Marsha Andrews because they wouldn't be here if they didn't also talk to Charles DeVall. He brought them workforce. And Marsha told them how great our school system was. So a win-win, and so it takes all of us working together. Another one that they're working on right now from the Business Development Board's perspective with Loar is Project UBC in Canal Point area. It's an alternative fuel project for fifty jobs. It's in the process, it hasn't been completed yet. And they wanted me to let you know that they are showing sites regularly for development out here. You may know that some of the issues are the cost with demulching. But the Business Development Board is working for resources to try to find money to help with the demulching costs. With that, Keith and I would be happy to answer any questions. We both have another meeting to go to, but we could not, either one of us be more proud than to be from the Glades. Mr. Wedgworth sleeps in the Glades. I only sleep for a few minutes. But we are so proud to be fighting for this community.
I'm Keith Wedgworth, mayor and rest of the commission. Thank you all for listening to us, hopefully y'all get more involved. So when we go over to West Palm and advocate for the Glades area, we know what y'all's needs are. So thank you very much for your time and look forward to working with y'all in the future.
Do you let them know the dates and the times that you guys need?
Yes, we need every second Tuesday of the month at three o'clock in the afternoon and Charles gets us his conference room at Career Source.
Again, that's Loar, second Tuesday of the month, three o'clock at the Career Source Palm Beach County office located in Belgrade, right there on Main Street. All right, thank you. Good evening, commission. Well, wow, how did I follow that? Well, first of all, let me say what a pleasure it is to be back in the city of Pahokee tonight. I'm so excited to talk to you all because we have a lot of exciting news to share. But first, I wanna say, I hope you all understand and get out of this tonight that all of these things that are happening, all of this takes a combined, joint, community effort. Career Source cannot do it alone, the school board cannot do it alone. Each of these entities cannot do it alone. We are much greater than just the sum of our parts. That's how we get projects like FinFROCK to come. That's how we work together to get TELUS to come. That's how we got West Tech back up, okay? This is a community-wide initiative, it's a community-wide effort and that's the only way we get results is we are all rowing the boat in the same direction, okay? So I hope you guys understand how much we all work for this community and how passionate we are about each of our parts. And what's most important is how well we work together. Because I can tell you firsthand, when you go around other parts of the state of Florida, you do not see this level of collaboration elsewhere in the state. So Palm Beach County, specifically the Glades, is very unique in that respect. So please understand that and it is our pleasure to serve you all. So thank you for that. So I wanted to get that out of the way before I got into where I really wanted to say. But my name is Charles DeVall, I'm with Career Source Palm Beach County. And for a little bit of background, I'm very passionate about workforce development and jobs. And specifically bringing jobs to this area is something that I've spent my entire career at Career Source Palm Beach County trying to do specifically to the Glades. And along the way, I've met just about the best partners that I could ever ask for when it comes to workforce development. So again, thank you for that. Now, if you are unfamiliar with what we do, that is workforce development, trying to find people jobs in lenient terms. So to that end, we have so many services that are available to all of you. We are a public organization, we help everybody from the first-time job seeker all the way up to the seasoned executive. And again, we are right here in Belgrade on Main Street. Now, I wanna talk a little bit about the economy first of all, and I wanna talk about the Glades economy because that's what we work in. And a lot of times, our conversations around jobs in the Glades usually come from a perspective of, we don't have enough jobs. And historically, that's been true. But I wanna give you guys some good news tonight, and that is that over the past few years, we have seen the unemployment rate in Belgrade and Pahokee and South Bay steadily tick down, okay? So we've gone from unemployment that hovers around forty percent during the height of the Great Recession, so we've cut that just about in half, all right? So right now is really a good time. If you are looking for work, right now is the best time in about twenty years to be looking for work in Pahokee and Belgrade and South Bay right now. And to help facilitate that, Career Source Palm Beach County, of course, is always trying to look for ways to bring jobs to people, that's why, that's where our partnerships come from. And that listening tour that Mrs. Andrews talked about, I would love also to be a part of that so that we can hear firsthand from the community what your workforce needs are. If you're struggling to find a job, what barriers to employment you have. We need to know all that because if I don't know that, then we can't do anything about it, right? So I'm gonna invite myself and insert myself into the listening tour whenever that happens. So thank you very much. Now, the next thing I wanna talk to you all about tonight is our Young Adult Program. Now, somebody mentioned earlier, what are the programs happening this summer? Well, I bring you good tidings with great joy. I wanna tell you that we have our summer program, we do it every year, but we bring it back this year. We have our summer program where we take young adults and we work with people from the ages of sixteen to twenty-four years old. That's what I'm talking about when I say young adults. Does this come on? So I'm looking at people sixteen to twenty-four years old for our Young Adult Program, okay? Now, I don't get quite down to fifteen, but I can start at sixteen. Our Young Adult Program is one of the premier young adult programs in the state because we serve young people in two stages. Number one, we take all of our young adults and we put them through a, what we call a career boot camp. So for our young people who don't know anything about a job, who never held a job before, who don't know anything about the word work, this is your gateway, this is your introduction. We're gonna teach you how to write a resume, we're gonna teach you how to explore what you wanna do. We're gonna give you some job search tips. Again, career boot camp, we're gonna talk to you about how to shake a hand when you get on the job site. We're gonna talk to you about how to show up on time, about how to work while you're at work and not on Instagram all day while you're at the job, all that is covered. Now, so after we get done with that, we actually give you a chance to put what we have taught you into practice. What does that mean, Charles? Well, we partner with businesses in the community to provide a paid internship. And we do this during the summer, we will be doing it during the summer, but we also do this year-round. But our next group is coming up in the summer as well. And the program typically lasts for about five weeks. Now, I said paid, Career Source Palm Beach County covers the cost and we're actually gonna be paying fifteen dollars an hour this summer. So if you have young people and they want, and you don't want them on your couch all day watching TV, burning up your air conditioning, send them down to Career Source Palm Beach County because this summer, we are having this program. Okay, now I got some flyers that I'm gonna hand out as well. And our first session starts in June and you can sign up, start it right now on our website. Our first classes sessions start in June. Now, the second piece to that, now that's just summer. Now, before that, for the first time ever, Career Source Palm Beach County is having a job fair exclusively for our young people. Those sixteen to twenty-four folks exclusively for our young people. And that is gonna be on April the 12th at our office in Belgrade. So we're gonna have some employers there who are willing to hire them at a little bit younger age, who are willing to understand they may not, you know, have a whole bunch of skills right now, but they're willing to work with them. So I'm also gonna send this flyer out as well, this is our job fair for April the 12th at my office. And if there's a way that maybe I can work with the city to, if you guys have a newsletter or something that goes out so I can work with you to promote some of these events, maybe to some people who weren't able to come tonight, I'd be happy to do that to you as well and send you some information that we have as well. But please, let your young people know what we have going on, not only this summer, but year-round. We have the job fair, we have a summer youth program too. Yes, ma'am, I see you. To work with small businesses?
For the small business, for the students, you gotta have them to work with the small businesses.
Yes, ma'am.
What are the qualifications and do you have any incentives for those small businesses?
We have, so for, to be an internship site, we require that you have a brick and mortar business, that you've been, that you are registered with the state of Florida, that we can verify your employment identification number. And then we'll look at the types of jobs that you are looking for as well. But also, you mentioned something, and I wanna say this really to you, when we talk about the economy locally, thank you for doing what you're doing and that's helping small businesses get going because what we need in our community, of course, is small business development, is small businesses to grow. Because those businesses are gonna be the drivers of the economy. So thank you for doing what you're doing and helping get some of the small businesses off the ground.
See, I ain't doing nothing for, I've been running my business for twenty-seven years in the city. I know it's difficult, thank you, Blatter. Not one time from the city of Pahokee for running my business here, not one night, not one night. No acknowledgement, no, no hesitation. And it's that, it's that.
Charles.
Yes, ma'am.
So for the people that have businesses that wanna, that wanna came up with you to use that internship, how do they?
Give me a call. And first, let me say this. We work with businesses on this program and I do have to acknowledge our strong partnership with the city of Pahokee. We have a long and extended partnership with the city of Pahokee in our Young Adult Internship Program. You all have hired dozens of interns over the years and in a few instances, some have even gotten permanent jobs out of it. So we certainly appreciate your partnership as well. I'm not, this is for y'all. This is for everybody. This is for everybody. And periodically, we have job fairs or recruiting events, just depending on what's happening. And again, I would love to be here and come back with you when we have those types of things happening so that you all know what we have going on. Yes, sir, I see you in the back.
Now, I see that the April fair is nine to twelve. Are the schools going to be, you know, like participating? Because this is like during school time.
Right. So our Young Adult Program, because it's funded by federal dollars, the emphasis, and I forgot to mention this, the emphasis is on young adults who are out of school. So if we do it during school, the emphasis is on those who are out of school. But those students who are in school now will have a chance to join our program during the summer. And to give you an idea, the types of students that we work with, we work with young people who may have barriers to employment also. Maybe they did not complete high school, or maybe they are teen parents, or maybe they are runaways. So we work with individuals, young adults, who have barriers to employment and we help them try to overcome those barriers. And that's the population that we target. However, during the summer, when those students transition and they're out of school, then they can come and take part in our summer program as well.
So the summer is eighteen, I mean sixteen to twenty-four?
It's all sixteen and twenty-four. Yes, ma'am.
And the job fair is eighteen through twenty-four?
So the job fair on the twelfth is for our young adults. So you can be sixteen, twenty-four. So if we have a, if we have a business who will hire at sixteen years old, then you should be there. But, and if you don't, if you can't find a job, that's okay because we have a summer program coming up. So if that doesn't catch you, then we'll catch you there. Alright? So again, Career Source Palm Beach County, some of y'all know Regina, for years we've been doing this. We are going to pay for your internship. We are also going to hook you up with a matching employer and hopefully we try to do it by your skill. So if you're interested in this area, then we try to find, you know, a job that's comparable. We try to do all that for you. So again, I'm just here to let you all know what we have going on. Hopefully you all tell someone in your life who might be able to take advantage of these services. Yeah, I saw a couple hands. Yes, sir, in the black? Actually, that's not even a disqualifier. If you, I mentioned we work with young people with barriers. If you have a record and you're a young person, that's actually one of the barriers that we try to serve. So that's not going to keep you out of our program. We try to make it easy. Yes, sir? Thank you. Thank you. Right. Right. This is what we need. I'm going to be talking about this on Love and Company every day. And I know y'all ain't going to let me down like some of them up there don't let me down. Some of them up there, they don't let us totally down. I beg and plead with them. I kiss people but for them. And let me also just say this, the job is not the endpoint. The other thing that we really need to talk about and we have is training. That's why our partnership with West Tech is so important because that's really the next frontier in work. We have got to get people trained. The jobs and companies are open up now. They want you to have some skills. How are you going to get skills and get a job if you are not trained? That's why Career Source is here as a resource. The Roundtable is here as a resource and we're here to do all that together. So that is the next frontier and that's the thing that I preach now. We've got jobs. The jobs are coming. Now I've got to work on making sure that our workforce is ready to take those jobs where they become available. So I had a PowerPoint and everything. I didn't even get to it, but that's alright. I think that might be my time, but I appreciate it.
And I know our time is running out and I thank the mayor and the commission. You all have been fabulous. You know the Roundtable. Donnie Roberts, come up here. Come on up here, Donnie Roberts. We've had the Roundtable every second Tuesday of the month, inviting all of the commissioners, the community to come, to hear the kinds of things we're doing in all of the Glades region, Pahokee, Belgrade, South Bay, and Canal Point. I thank you for being with me since 2010 and doing it. We're doing it with the community, elected officials, you, the parents. But we've got to get out on the ground. That's why when I see the city manager here, he's going to help me with this listening tour because that's critical. Yes, he is. I know he is because I've been working with him. Because when we think about West Tech, we have electrical, plumbing, HVAC, carpentry, healthcare, CDL. We've got something for everybody, but if you don't go out into the community and find the people to tell them, and if they don't have someone like you, Mr. Love, that they know and trust saying, "Go over to West Tech", they may not come because of the commissioner. We got that for you. Yeah, and I need you all. I need to be in your community, in Citizens Village, wherever I need to go. I need you to knock on the doors one evening and say, "We're coming out here. We're going to pass out some flyers and we're going to get you over to West Tech." And it's not for me, for four years. So we got you. Absolutely. That's what we're going to do. And the last thing I want to say, which was so successful with the pastor, we worked with Palm Tran to get the buses to carry people that live right here in Pahokee over to West Tech. So we got that done. Palm Tran says, "We can help you. We can change our schedule to pick up". Because transportation is an issue. Everybody doesn't have a car. Maybe all of you have a car, but everybody doesn't have a car. So when we go out and talk about all this stuff, people say, "Well, how am I going to get there? Who's going to help me with my family? How am I going to get something to eat? I want to be trained. I know you can give me the tuition and the scholarship, but who's going to help me?" That's where the city manager will work with me, work with Ms. Moore and Dr. Ford. We can make it happen. So thank you all so much. We love you, commissioners. Thank you so much.
On my behalf, I want to, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming here tonight. In the years that I've been here, I'm glad that you came out. You informed the citizens of Pahokee. Because we're always on the back burner and we really don't know about the programs and how they work and everything. So thank you for coming out and everybody seeing your face and getting to know you. So thank you.
Thank you all so much, Marsha.
Next on the agenda is the concierge agenda, the February twenty-eighth, twenty-third. City Commissioner, may I have the concierge item consisting of the February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three city commission meeting? With your pleasure. Unless someone requests it, Ben Poole, we're going to approve this. Entertaining motion in a second.
I'll second.
It is moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the approval of the concierge agenda consisting of the February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three city commission meeting. Call for questions. Call for question here in nine. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bapp?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioner. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next on the agenda is old business discussion of existing activities or previous held events, if any. The first item on the old business is the discussion of the direction of Jeff Winters as grant writer, consultant, city manager.
I just wanted, we did get a chance at the last meeting to discuss the presentation done by Mr. Winter or for that position with? So for this, that position?
Can you be a so, could you escort her out since she's?
I ain't got no scope, be nowhere else. Mayor. Oh, y'all that got to get up. I'm going to do like I been doing. I'm getting the hell up out. Now beat on that. You going to beat on that thing when that thing going to pop up, hit your ass right in the face. I don't care. I'm going to spit my mind wet garbage. And I will be back the next meeting.
You can continue, Mrs. Lewis. So I?
Are these microphones working? I don't think they're working.
Testing, testing. It's not working? Val, can you hear me?
Yes.
Barely?
Testing.
Lieutenant, Mr. Love?
Tell him what I did.
Continue talking and disrupting the meeting. You can continue talking and disrupting the meeting.
Continue talking. Everybody in here talking. Yes. Okay, Lieutenant. Because he ain't got no reason to put me out of here. He don't have no damn reason. He just don't like me because I don't like him no more. Ask anybody. Fuck you too. Yeah, all y'all. All y'all. I know how y'all live. Yeah, I know you were. But you ain't got no heart. I know how y'all live. Damn all y'all. Tell them they like you got stick in their mouth. And you ain't got to put me out. I'm walking out. And don't be violent. Calling my wife going to have a baby squirrel.
So what I was seeking, can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
So I just want to get direction from the commission on the position of grant writer to put it out for, proposal for, a request for a proposal for the position is what I like to do versus hiring for a person.
Well, that is a proper procedure to put it out. And we do need one. And we don't need one full-time because we can't afford it. But we do need one.
My question also would be, how many potential applicant have we interviewed? And did any meet the qualification of a grant writer?
We received only two, sir. Two applications.
So we interviewed, did we interview any of the two?
No.
So we looked at applicants?
Because they, their experience, they had no experience. They had, they got certified, but they hadn't done anything to garnish grants and things for anybody yet.
Did we respond to the applicant as far as a letter saying that they didn't meet qualification or whatever the circumstance may have been? Because what I've heard, and this is just in the past, that folks have applied for the jobs and haven't been even contacted one way or the other. And then some allegedly have interviewed for jobs and haven't heard back one way or the other. So I think that's not proper or fair to have someone interview and not at least give them the outcome of their interview. I'm not saying that's the case, but that's what I've been hearing in the past.
You're correct, and I've moved forward with corrective action when it's been brought to my attention. Now, I believe, Mr. Manuel, do you have any status update?
How long has the grant writer been advertised?
It's been out there for a while, but just within the last thirty days, two applications came forward.
Could we get copies of the applicants?
Sure.
Okay, since I've taken over the interim position, I have issued letters of anyone who has not been accepted or that we've interviewed and has not been accepted, we have issued letters and we will continue to do so.
Is this just for the grant writer or for finance director and HR director?
Any position that I have interviewed or that we've interviewed for since I've been in the position, they have received letters if they did not, if they did not qualify or we didn't accept.
I know several people that have applied for both positions with master's degrees and have not even been called to interview.
Okay. Once again, the people that we have interviewed, and we've interviewed some that had master's degrees but did not have experience for municipal finance directors, those people, we have notified them by mail that they have not been accepted.
May I speak? I just want to say, you know, businesses are not required to give any form of response to any potential applicants. That is not a requirement. Some businesses don't have to reach out to you. It's a courtesy that some do provide, but that's not a requirement. It's not.
That's correct. But anyone that we have interviewed and did not, then we sent them a letter telling them that we're not, you know, we're not hiring them.
It's just, it's just hard to believe that we've advertised. For four years, we've been looking for personnel for those positions and we haven't been able to secure one person, you know, with the qualifications. I don't understand what the issue is.
We haven't been here four years.
You haven't been, but the position's been advertised for that long.
Well, I've been here six months, you know, or one on seven. And I took over the position, I don't know, I believe it was in August. So everything I have done is tried to get, and we've hired people for maintenance. We've hired people for the cemetery. So we are doing what we can to get employees in. And we have hired from the city of Pahokee. We have hired employees from the city. So we're doing everything we can to get employees, but they have to qualify. Thank you.
So are you proposing to do an RFP?
Yes, because with our dollars, it gives an opportunity for a person Yes, because with our dollars, it gives an opportunity for a person, even the ones that have applied, to come back and give us a proposal and say if, if they do receive it or they win grants for us to propose how they wanna manage the grant and get their salaries that way.
How, how are you planning on advertising?
Um, with the position, I believe we're gonna have to do, Ms. Adams is gonna place it out there probably by next week, and it'll be for, well, it depends on the, what the fees are, if we, depending on how we set it up, if it's two weeks versus thirty days, it just depends on a compensation package we, we go with, correct, Ms. Adams?
Now, I'm asking, how are you and what means are you gonna get to distribute this RFP out there, are you going to Indeed or the Palm Beach Post, however you're gonna do?
We're gonna use the paper, so basically, it's just through Palm Beach Post, right?
Okay, and we will list it on our web page?
Yes.
Why are we just, why are we just posting it on the Palm Beach Post? And it's usually a couple of times.
Because it's a request for proposal, so you have to advertise it in the paper, depends on compensation, so if it's over a certain plateau, you may have to go up to even thirty days, it, it depends on the amount.
So with the, once I place the RFP or RFQ or statement of qualifications, what have you, it will be advertised in Palm Beach Post, usually the average is twenty-one days, and it will be placed on the website as well.
So how, how does that work? For, for grant writer, how do they get paid?
So it will, for the consultant, it will depend on what their fee schedule is, so that's why we, we're going to ask for a request for qualifications. And based on their qualifications.
Fees schedule, like they charge a percentage of, of whatever the grant is?
Yes, ma'am.
Do they have a set fee?
It's, it's not a contingency fee that you can do with the grant writer, but we can talk about it, I can give you some examples, but you can't do a contingency fee.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I will say this, this is a key position, we've been looking forward to hiring someone for a while now, and to me, to just to stick this into the Palm Beach Post, and I know it's a requirement, and we don't have to do anything outside of that, we got one person that have shown previous interest in it, and if you just put that in a Palm Beach Post somewhere, I don't know who would be able to find it, maybe they look for things like that in the Palm Beach Post, but if they wanted to do something like this, you know, you're only given really, that person now has an heads up probably, I'm quite sure we'll be informing them that it's gonna be going out in the Palm Beach Post, I just hope that we can find some other means to at least put it out there a little more extensively than just send it in the paper and meet minimal requirement for it, for the posting of it.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, a, a lot of cities do use the ManStar, I don't know if you all use the ManStar, but that's something that a lot of cities use.
Yep.
And is there not, you can be like Indeed, you know, I know a lot of people go on Indeed, but going back to Palm Beach County days, uh, uh, Palm Beach, but Palm Beach League of Cities, from what they discussed when we were there, that a lot of cities this size with a budget like we have, they don't usually hire staff as a grant writer, they hire, they do a contract, it's like a contract deal with the, with the grant writer, with a size like this, or whatever the city would decide how the grant writer, you know, once it goes out, but it'll go as a grant writer as a contract, cause actually, the city this size really don't have the funds to.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're not.
To pay a grant writer for what they really deserve.
That's an okay procedure to do, but I'm just trying to see and hope that when we do decide that's what we're gonna be doing, which I think we already have, at least leaning toward it, that we have some means of making sure that that word get out that people who are looking to do things like that have opportunity to see it.
They advertise where, where those kinda jobs.
Right.
Yes.
Right, so we mentioned Indeed, and the city attorney mentioned another site that could be used to at least get the word out.
ManStar. She mentioned ManStar.
Right, okay.
That's where you find all the bids.
So do we need a consent vote on that, give the city manager the authorization to go ahead and proceed in requesting a proposal for a grant writer, as opposed to continue to try to just outright hire someone?
So that's the way we go, attorney, you have to put out the motion first for him to.
To put out a RFP.
Or he just doing a discussion of it?
I think he's just doing a discussion of it, and then at the next meeting, we can bring it back and, as a resolution.
No, I'll, I'll bring it back as a resolution, as, as the legal is suggesting. I just want direction from you guys collectively to be able to go, to do it, I don't wanna do anything without you guys being okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We're ready for the next discussion and direction of extending the MOU agreement with Rebel Recovery, city manager.
Thank you, sir, so I, I met the two gentlemen that serviced the, the Muck area and the Glades, and I was in with a joint meeting with South Bay with them, and all they were looking for is to come into our three cities and provide service for those who have drug dependency problems in any way they can assist, they asked for any space if we had it, if not, it's no impact on us to allow them to put their tents out on the sidewalks or, or on city property to reach out to the, the citizens in need, so I didn't know if, how you guys felt about doing a memorandum of agreement for Rebel Recovery.
So we, do we currently have one, you got a standing, has just indicated to me that's the one already in existence, that we're just extending the time on it?
Well, they have one with Bell Glade, a memorandum of understanding the Rebel Recovery people do.
No, I was asking, do they have one with us, you used the word of standing, standing agreement?
Sorry, I extend as an invite to do that, not that they have a current.
Is this the young man that came to the last commission meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
I think that would be good. So they just look for a facility or place to.
Yeah, they're not asking for anything from us, any services they're not providing to the community.
Give you a draft of whatever they have from Bell Glade.
So what do you need, what do you need up for that?
Thinking, got any general consensus that it would bring it back at our next commission meeting to have us approve it or reject it?
Yes, and the, and then under my city report is where we'll start doing the updates on the city projects.
Okay, next is, item on agenda is public hearings or ordinances, which we don't have any, we do have two resolutions, first resolution is resolution twenty-two-three dash thirteen, city attorney.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida, approving the Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County's American Rescue Plan Act, offer round one installment two for the city's Parks and Recreation After School Program, providing for adoption and representation, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney, city manager, could you give us a brief explanation of resolution twenty-two-three dash thirteen?
Yes, sir. I wanted to give a background, the Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County has awarded the city of Pahokee Parks and Recreation Program with the American Rescue Act, Plan Act, Child Care Stabilization Subgrant Funding for the After School Program. This ELC, Offer Care Stabilization is in two installments, the total amount is twenty-two thousand, six hundred, nineteen dollars and fifty-two cent to be used for, for, by the Parks and Rec After School Program. The total, this total will increase or be added to Parks and Rec's already After School Program budget, staff recommends approval of the first round of the installment.
Is this a total, the total amount is twenty-six to be given in two installments, or this is installment one or two?
Greg, did you wanna tell me how many installments you've received?
I don't have the hard copy in front of me, first, my name is Gregory Wiggs, Parks and Rec's Director, City of Pahokee. So this is the first of two installments, each installment should be twenty-two thousand, what, that's seven hundred?
Six hundred and nineteen fifty-two.
Yeah, the twenty-two, this is the first installment.
Okay, so this is first of two?
Yes, and we was also awarded another installment for next month, so the, the money have already been deposited in the city of Pahokee account, so we're asking for that money to be released to Parks and Rec's department account so we could utilize it.
And what will you be utilizing it for?
For the up, update of our program, so everything, I wanted to get up and do a presentation about the summer program that we're getting ready to launch for the summer, so we did an update on all our classrooms and all our facilities, some classrooms and some game rooms have been updated with, with new games, new TVs, and new equipments for the classroom, these funds are specifically for the After School Program, so we're open for tours, if you guys would like to come and see the money that we already utilized, and this money would be just reimbursed for the money that we already spent.
So you've already used it out of your budget, and now this is putting it back in the budget?
Yes, but it's specifically for the After School Program.
Is any of this being itemized?
Um, I don't have the hard copy in front of me, but they are being itemized, I just don't have it in front of me, so I can read it out to you, but in the next commission meeting, if you want me to, I could print out copies and bring it so you could see it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay.
When, when, and you said this is, you've been using it for the summer program, when does the summer program start?
Um, the actual date, you know, let me get my flight. It's an after-school program. But we're also utilizing the money for our summer program as well. So the summer program start June fifth, and it'll go through August the fourth, and, but the After School Program, of course, we know is a year-round program.
I have a question, um, just for clarity, there's a difference between after-school and OST, are we talking OST, are we, is that out of school time?
Yeah.
Because the summer is not after-school, it's OST, so does that include OST?
Well, the ELC is the Early Learning Coalition, it's separate from the OSC, so the After School Program is under ELC, Early Learning Coalition, so all funds that they allocated through the Offer Grant would be allocated towards the After School Program.
But summer is OST?
Yeah.
That's not after-school, that's OST, I'm asking.
So in the summer, we do a summer program, it's an extension of the After School Program, which it serves the same kids that we have in the After School, uh, After School Program, but it's an extension for the summer, so instead of having them after-school, we have them through the duration of the day, eight to five.
Is it same kids, or, or is it open to anybody in the community?
It's open to anybody in the community, but of course, those kids that are in the After School Program, they already in the program, and their parents just continue throughout the summer.
How do they get an After School Program?
Well, application first, and then there's.
That's, that's before the school starts?
Excuse me?
Before school starts, they, they apply?
Before and during, like if someone.
So they could apply anytime?
Tomorrow, they can come and take an application and apply for the After School Program. And there are scholarships available, we also help with the scholarship, we don't provide anything, but we provide services for us, they can come in, they can utilize the computers if need, we have staff that can walk them through the application if they have issues, and then there's programs that have scholarships, and we could point them to those programs to help assist them in the cost.
And when, when the kids come to the After School Program, what, what does it consist? What do y'all do after school?
The first thing we do is academics, homework, that's the first thing, we make sure that they do homework, we provide snack, and from snack, they're dispersed to the different age-appropriate classes, and from there, we have, excuse me, from there, we have anything from basketball to tug-of-war, we just started some, some.
I'm sorry, if I could, we wanna go ahead and at least entertain the motion in a second, and I requested then to do it in proper order. City commission having had resolution twenty-two-three dash thirteen properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by city manager, what is your pleasure?
May I move to accept resolution twenty-two-three dash thirteen?
Second.
It is a move by Commissioner Bolden and properly second by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of resolution twenty-two-three dash thirteen, call for questions.
I just wanted him to explain it, cause, you know, I like to, you know, especially to the, to the Hispanic kids, let them know what.
So first off, for the After School Program, we have them for the duration of two and a half hours, we go for pickup at two-thirty, they arrive approximately two-thirty-five, some three, and then we drop off at five, but once they arrive, the teacher is there on the corners to, to pick them up from the bus, take them to their classes, we distribute snacks, and we provide homework assistance, after homework assistance, each teacher have a, a daily log sheet where they have curriculums and activities throughout that day for their group, all curriculums are age-appropriate, all activities are age-appropriate, no kid is with a kid that's not their age in the age group, so we separate the kids based on the age, and throughout that day, they follow the list of curriculums that we have outlined for the kids, if you come to the main office, we could provide you with the curriculum list, we have a weekly calendar of all the activities and curriculums that we provide to the participants, we also do, on Friday, we do a field trip, local field trip, so we go to the parks, different parks, we take outdoor equipments and outdoor activities for the kids at the park, spring break week, we start Friday, this Friday, we have a field trip scheduled for Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, we're on. We have a field trip scheduled for Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, we're on site. And Wednesday, Thursday, we have field trips scheduled for the kids.
The summer program is gonna be forever, anybody that wants to-
Yeah, anybody that, uh, desire to come. This year, we did some updates.
And what is the fee?
The fee, um, in most cases, most parents are under scholarships. And, uh, when they, uh, qualify for the scholarship, the, the, uh, resource or, or the organization that they qualify for, they pay their fees. And, uh, there's a small portion that they have to pay, but the biggest portion, they would, uh, um, the program would pay. But if they pay out of their pocket, it's fifty dollars a week.
For the summer too?
Yeah, fifty dollars a week. But I wanna highlight some of the upgrades that we're doing, uh, uh, doing to the program, which these funds have, have, uh, provided the, um, money for. There's a glamour room that the girls have fell in love with. They don't even wanna come outside anymore. And in this glamour room, we got, uh, mannequins with, 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 uh, wigs and the girls are learning to braid hair, do hair. They got makeup kicks where they learning to put on makeup. They learning to, uh, do their own nails and they fell in love with this glamour room. We also have a game room for the boys that desire to play games. We got pool tables, we got football, we got table tennis. And we also have a technology room where our participants, our kids make their own T-shirts. They make their own summer shirts, they even making shirts for our, uh, football team. So, uh, these areas and these upgrades are really attracting and motivating the kids to wanna be there. We also have, uh, we also have another piece that, that kinda catapult from, uh, our after-school program and our summer program. If any kids are participants in our after-school program, they get a discount for our tackle football season. So the parents are able to benefit if they have two or three kids in our after-school program, they get a discount when it comes to registration. And I don't know if y'all saw it, but a couple of weeks ago, we did signing day. And they still talking about that today, about it was something new, something different. And, and that signing day for football registration, which is about three months away, we did four thousand dollars in registration. I haven't seen four thousand dollars in registration since I've been here. And we-
That accounts for how many, how much?
Uh, so for that registration, they had to do a portion of the registration, which is a hundred and fifty dollars. The entire registration is a hundred and fifty dollars. So they had to do seventy-five dollars to participate in the signing day. And I don't know if you saw it, did you see it?
I saw, I saw when they, that they had physicals and stuff.
Yeah, they had their hats lined up and, and of course, we had the City of Pohokee hat. They had the Jaguars hat, they had the, uh, Florida Gators hat. And they had the opportunity to experience signing with the City of Pohokee. So-
So how, how did that work?
It was all-
Who's that jagging the other, they, they get to pick what team they wanted to play?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Now, I want, just wanted to ask if any other commission had any additional questions? We wanna pay it to move.
Uh, real quick, um, uh, do you, will you guys, this summer be having, uh, maybe guests come in? Uh, maybe like, um, maybe an organization that specializes in maybe technology coding to work with them in a computer lab?
So that's the other piece that we're featuring this year. We starting up a STEM program. I don't know if you're familiar with the STEM program, but we're including for the first time a middle school piece. So we're planning to house and, um, do a middle school program in addition to our elementary program. And with this STEM program, there's, there's a host of agencies that have contracted with the STEM program, which is provided through Primetime. And Primetime would send over all, um, especially from the, uh, coast area, professionals, CEOs, entrepreneurs, and to teach and to train how to become a CEO, entrepreneur, firefighters, lawyers, um, and there's another piece, culinary. We, we partner with Primetime, they come, they teach them how to cook. And they get an added bonus, they get the food that they're able to, um, learn to cook, so.
To do that, you know, you gotta have kitchen and stuff, right?
Yeah, so I partake in the culinary, uh, training, no, I just-
Total, what the kid, what the, what they were asking for, for the summer, for the kids?
Yes.
Not to be home with a caliph, you could bring them right to the-
Yes.
Parks and Rec, be a par, there is something for them to do.
So, so when I seen that on, on, uh, TV, I said, well, let me come over and share what the City of Pohokee, uh, has to offer, not just for the summer, but this throughout the year.
Very good, I like that.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
In addition ques-, I'm sorry. Mr. Williams, it's among the commission at this point. In additional questions, here and under, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bapp?
Yes, thank you, motion passed by unanimous vote. Next we have Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen, City Attorney.
The Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohokee, Florida, approving a not-for-profit subrecipient gap, grant program in connection with the American Rescue Act funds in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, forty-eight dollars, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir, the City of Pohokee has received an allocation of three-point-one million dollars. The funds were received at two transactions of one million, five-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, four-forty-five. Uh, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we're looking at one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars to fund the following program initiatives. That's job workforce program, educational program, training program, and business development program. The funds we're looking to utilize is to interface with a nonprofit to help us with dispersing, uh, in these, uh, areas and moving forward.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission having had Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen properly read into the records by our city attorney, properly explained by city manager, what is your pleasure?
Have I moved that we would accept Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen?
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption of Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen. Call for questions.
Yeah, I got a question. Uh, this is a total of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, how is this gonna work? Are you gonna have one nonprofit, several nonprofits? Um, and, and, and how does it, how's each program gonna work?
So-
It's kinda confusing.
So we, we kinda put the cart ahead of the horse by, uh, speaking to some of the nonprofits to assist us with this. There's interest. Uh, we wanted to start with the nonprofits so that they can help us qualify and work with, um, the community in, in getting out these, uh, dollars to the, to people who qualify.
But people that qualify how? Cause there's, I mean, there's, there's, there's four or five different, um-
So we, we plan on, uh, Ms. Peggy, you wanna come forward? So we have to finish writing out the guidelines of the program. And, uh, Ms. Boulay Washington can explain.
Well, good af-, good evening, uh, Mayor and Commission, community members. Um, in your packet, you also have the application for the program. In the application for the program, there is a, there are guidelines there, uh, for the program. There's a, a rating scale. It also, um, allows for the nonprofit that applies for the program to give a, um, a proposal, so to speak, as to what they're going to be, uh, providing, what services they're going to be providing. There are several categories, qualifying categories, that those nonprofits can apply for. Um, economic stability and resilience, housing affordability and ownership, um, homeownership, educational opportunities and job skills development, healthcare access and healthcare outcomes, criminal justice and safety are, um, just a few that they can provide those services under. So it is not, um, uh, geared towards one specific non-for, not, not-for-profit. It is open to all not-for-profits within the, um, the Glaze area of the Pohokee community that wants to provide these services.
So, so you're talking about housing affordability and homeownership. What kind of, what kind of nonprofit and, and how would there be? What service are they gonna provide? How would that work?
So you have not-for-profits such as Habitat for Humanity. Um, you have entities in, uh, organizations like Community Partners that have, um, um, first-time homebuyers programs. And they would walk a resident into the first-time homebuyers process. They would handhold them through that entire process, turnkey situation, get them into the home and the whole nine yards. There are other, um, organizations that provide similar services, um, that also, there are other organizations that, um, provide, um, resources to get to those services. So those organizations that provide such services could apply for those funds under that category.
But, okay, so you're giving fifteen thousand dollars, uh, let's say Habitat for Humanity, to help people behind the house from-
No, 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 so if-
Fill out the paperwork, how, how?
So it doesn't necessarily mean that that, that particular not-for-profit would get the entire fifteen thousand. It would all depend on what their proposal is for. And then, and two, what their, their rating is and what the, the city would approve their program for. So there could be three other organizations that fall within that same category. And the city could say, hey, look, all three of these organizations provide something within these three categories that the residents can benefit from. We'll split this pot in three. Or we'll give this organization this much because it goes towards, it can help towards this. We'll give this organization that much and that way, um, we're able to still, um, spread the love for lack of better words.
I have a question, if they are not-for-profit and they already provide this service, isn't that what they do anyway? So why are we paying them to do the service that they provide for, for free? Cause they're not-for-profit?
So with any not-for-profit, their services essentially are provided for free to the community. However, there's, it has to be, there has to be money that runs the program. There has to be dollars that come into the program to buy materials, to, uh, provide, let's say they provide snacks. Or they provide continuing education courses where they would refer the, the resident to another, uh, resource that's connected to their services, but that resource may be a, a paid resource. You understand what I'm saying? So they're different, um, um-
So to understand it correctly, this is money that you're gonna give out to this different, different, uh, nonprofits that provide this type of training. So this is money that you're helping them with. This is not, that has to do, this is not for the community, this is for the nonprofit.
No, well, essentially, it goes back into the community because-
Well, they're already providing that, but that's not what you're giving it for. You're giving it to assist them.
Well, they may not necessarily provide that to this community. They may have the capability to provide it, but they may not have the funding to provide that particular service. So with their, with our funding, their services, they're able to marry the two and be able to help the residents out. So at the end of the day, it still goes back to the residents, just by the organization.
But ultimately, you're giving the money to the nonprofits so that the nonprofits could do what they do. It's just like they're getting, uh, a grant from the state or from the government or anybody. The city's giving these grants out to the different nonprofits for them to do the jobs that they already provide as a nonprofit to the community. That's, that's what, what ultimately it is.
Commissioner Perez, so one of the thoughts was like, one of the nonprofits like Grit. Grits, they help train you to do, uh, computer, uh, programming and things like that. They could come and provide so many scholarships to residents for job training, get a certificate, and, and be making nice money.
Yeah, in other words, you're giving them the money so that they could do what they want with it.
The eighty thousand earmarked for Business Development Program, that is to help businesses. We're not trying to use that money towards that. I mean, the person who is the, in business for themselves would come and say, I need the following technical assistance or I need assistance with forming my, uh, LLC cause I was always a, uh, a, a sole proprietor, you know, things like that. That's, so when the guidelines come back at our next meeting, it'll be more in-depth and you'll see.
I, I have two questions.
But business development, what, what, I mean, what, what type of, uh, nonprofit you use for business development program?
Well, you have the young lady that was up here this evening.
Separate, that, that's separate. Business development is for our businesses to come apply.
So that's not for a nonprofit, those are for businesses that, that want to, that wanna, wanna either operate or grow or for, for the different businesses to use.
And it's open to all businesses, so for-profit, not-for, not-for-profit would be able to apply through that pot. Um, you have, for example, the young lady that was up here, um, who was talking. She does, she has her business development, um, I believe it's an academy or, or something of that, that such. And she would then mentor them, she uses space. So those things can go towards administrative costs, it can go towards, uh, materials, it can go towards the student itself, it can go towards a, a plethora of things to support the business. And then you have brick and mortar businesses where, um, they may need a new door. They may need a new POS system. They may need, um, they may need to, um, they may have revenue shortfall for themselves because COVID, um, maybe had them behind, right? So all those different things would be, we, we would be able to provide those funds to support those businesses.
Could I ask a question? Is the total amount of this, uh, project is fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars?
The total amount is one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty, forty-five dollars.
Um, maybe I'm looking at some a little-
The category, so that's on fine. They're, they're broken down in categories.
Oh, in each category, you're working then.
So-
I'm looking at the, uh, resolution itself.
Yeah.
Resolution B, twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen. It says in the, in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars.
That's the first program, so-
So we only approve in one program right now?
Correct, sir, yes. And then we'll, next, um, commission meeting, we'll be bringing the rest of the programs to-
So we're doing the job wo-, wo-, workforce program?
Yes.
Is that what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
So they're different amounts?
And the-
Is it the fifteen one?
Yeah, there are four different amounts.
Look, look on page seventeen.
It's fifteen thousand.
Just read the first resolution, that's all I was, uh, that's where I got that fifteen thousand from.
Yes, sir.
It's just one resolution coming before us for a, for approval. That's just-
The job workforce program, on one page it says fifteen thousand, one fifty-two. And on the other page it says-
Only, maybe I got one?
It says fifteen thousand, one forty-eight.
The agenda we have today, only have one program on here for the fifteen thousand. Y'all got more than one you're gonna be approving tonight?
No, it's one, but it has all four of them on there, but it's just one they're approving.
Yeah, I'm a- I'm talking about this resolution here, though, that's, yeah, yeah, that's I just didn't hear. My, my last question, when did this program that we decided under our spending that we would actually implement and, and, and prove? when did we do that?
Well, when it did the total?
The breakdown of what we're doing now for this particular grant program, when did we decide that as a commission? Or did it come from the ARPA committee? Did this originated from staff? Did it originated from commission discussion? This is the first time I've heard of this particular program for ARPA spending. I wondered where it came from.
Mr. Mayor? You all did have an exhibit to, when you approved the budget for ARPA funding. This should be one of the line items. I'm assuming it's the same amount. But there was one item that had to do with not-for-profits and money, ARPA money going to not-for-profit organizations. So this would, you all wanted to see each one of the programs broken down and brought back to you. This is the one dealing with that not-for-profit item. So if you have it with you tonight, if you have that budget with you, this budgeted expense should line up with that budget that you approved for the ARPA dollars.
And the reason I'm asking too, I don't just, I don't remember a call to discussion among us because every other program we was talking about, we had some...
I think it was discussed, it was discussed in one total and they asked for it to be broken down in lines. So that's why they brought it down in line. Because I think it was Commissioner Perez says, yeah, it was a total, but he wanted it broke down how it was broken down. So that's where...
Yes, it was in Exhibit A to the resolution that you approved.
But it's just, my question is, one, there's two of the totals are different. If they can correct the total, one has the fifteen thousand, one fifty-two, and the other has the fifteen, one forty-eight. I know she says the fifteen, one fifty-two would be the correct total. So on the resolution, it has the fifteen, one forty-eight.
And when we voted for this nonprofit, I believe it was a hundred thousand.
Is that the total? Is that the staff report?
The original one?
No, it was the, it was the one twenty-five. That was the total. He wanted it broke down.
Yeah, but I wanted to know what about...
Yeah, that's what this is. So that's what this is.
So, so the way this is gonna go, if you, if you're a nonprofit and, let's see, today we're passing the job workforce program. You're a nonprofit and you offer this type of service, you fill out an application and then what happens? Who goes through the applications? Who chooses the nonprofit?
So the application was constructed in such a way where there would be no misrepresentation of who got what. So there's a rating system. There's, there's a narrative that has to be provided. It's completely broken down into, into categories and things of that nature so that the non-for-profit can give us a clear idea and description of what they're doing, along with their budget, the cost for their, the different areas in their program and things of that nature. Staff would then review it and then rate it. And then they would be either ranked or that group would then be chosen or awarded.
Is it gonna come in front of us and let us know who is not-for-profits and how much they each got and what service they're gonna provide?
Yes, and for all the ARPA programs...
We like to supervise.
Yes, ma'am. And for clarity's sake, for all of the ARPA programs, any awardee would come before, we would bring it before you, either in the form of a spreadsheet or what have you. And you will know who that person is, how much they received and what the program is and what services they receive as well. So it will go before you.
What services they provide.
So before the funds are distributed, it has to be approved by the commission. The mayor and commission, excuse me, mayor.
And my last question, just for clarification though, I'm going back to my original question. Who, and I'm not against nonprofits by any stretch of imagination, but where did this originate from? Was it a recommendation of staff? Was it a recommendation of the ARPA committee? I'm just trying to find...
So it was a combination of the three and then it was discussed during the commission meeting.
It was a combination of what?
Of the three. It was a combination of...
Of the three what?
It was a combination of the ARPA committee, of city staff recommendations for different programs and different uses of the funds, as well as discussion with mayor and commission when those uses of the funds were presented.
Well, I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember the committee ever suggesting nothing about the nonprofit. As a matter of fact, I had questions about that from the committee, some of the committee members. And we, we never discussed anything about nonprofits. He came to us and I asked about it. Why are we paying a nonprofit to distribute the funds? Which that's what I thought it was, that you guys were gonna seek nonprofits to distribute the funds, but they're not distributing the funds. They're accepting the funds to distribute whatever services they provide, which they already do. But I understand you wanna help around.
Let me remind you. When we talked about when the minor home repair specifically got going, that we could use technical assistance from Habitat for Humanity to make sure those people's homes that were selected are getting repaired correctly and to use them as our eyes out in the field. It was that type of vision that crafted the nonprofit intervention. That's all.
Yeah, I understand that. But in a case like that, that's, that's, that's the part that it was not clear to me. And I asked, I asked over at the time. I understand now what, what the purpose is. You're giving this money to the nonprofits to help them out, to provide the service that they normally provide. Because they do receive grants or assistance or whatever. So what you're doing is giving your assistance, monetary assistance to the different nonprofits, supposedly to provide the services that is gonna be given back to the community. Basically, that's what it is.
To provide a service directly to our residents.
Yes. In addition to questions? You ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin? Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Vapp?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we move to new business.
Thank you.
Presentation by the City Manager of Activity Upcoming Events, if any.
You ready, Ms. Boulay? Washington on your... Ms. Boulay? My chance could, ma'am, mayor? No, 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 hold on a second.
Per order, mayor, if, if it's okay, if this is the commission. I know we have guests here that's been waiting to give their presentation of what they have to do. Can we do them since they...
What presentation?
I know that they have F.D. I would say we have one updates for Barfield Highway to give their, their updates. You know, I know, you know, we can have them to come. And I know these are here.
I was going to, we got to that before we got to my city manager report. It was suggested that we move from using the whole business for our updates on our city projects and stuff. So that's where...
I guess what you're saying, we have guests that we wanna...
That's been waiting, yeah, that's been waiting.
Of the city projects, of guests.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner, if I may. I have Ryan Bach, who is our contractors for Eastlake, to come up and give us an update, as well as James Washington from, for Barfield Highway. So this is Ryan Bach. Mark Chirrell.
How you doing? My name is Mark Surtchail, Realback Corporation. We are doing the Eastlake...
Can you speak up a little bit so they can really hear you about this Eastlake?
You got it. The Eastlake Project, Seventh Street Drainage Improvements. I'm the project manager. This is the actual project superintendent on site. We moved in last week and we've been working since then.
My name's Huber Hernandez with Realback. Basically, we started cleaning out the canal back behind Ricky Jackson Boulevard there, going to Seventh Street. Cleaning that out right now, trying to get all that stuff out of there, get it cleaned again so we can start getting ready to start going down Seventh Street with that drain, you know, the work there. And then start, after that, we'll start getting into the roadwork. So, and we started last week.
I have a question. So basically, what you're doing is drenching the canal and doing the roadwork? I thought you were supposed to drench it and, and replace the pipes?
There is, there's gonna be some... Yeah, we're cleaning out right now. Everything is coming down on, behind Ricky Jackson Boulevard. And then we're, there's, there's two sections that we gotta put some pipe in that we'll be scheduling when I get the canal cleaned to start doing the pipe work.
Doesn't that have pipe going? Doesn't the water flow through the pipe? Or where, where are these pipes located? And it's only two of them?
It's located, there's, there's a crossing right off of the corner of Seventh Street and I forget the name of that one road, right by the, by the old Eastlake Middle School. And then there's another crossing back behind the project, right there. And I'll have Johnson Davis, which is our subcontractor, they'll be doing that work as soon as I get to that point where I can bring them in to do the pipe work.
So this was, oh, I'm sorry.
And when you say road construction, what, what, what is that road construction? What are you...
All of Seventh Street, going down Seventh Street all the way up to McClure Road. We gotta take out all that asphalt and redo the whole road in there.
So you're talking about that, that road that goes around the canal?
Yeah, it comes down, and Seventh Street goes all the way down to the edge of the canal and comes all the way up to the corner there of McClure Road. Right next to the lift station. Yes, right now it goes to the edge in there.
So would this also stop? Because, you know, that's the area that always flood. So, and I know one area of that canal, there's a blockage. Would this open up that blockage so the water can flow?
They'll have a high point. One will be traveling, will move west and one will move east. And then we're gonna do a rip ride at that end, right there by McClure Road so like that the water can still get through there and not get all the trash, you know, caught up there.
Okay, one other question. She was just asking, the road construction, is that gonna take from McClure to the end? You know, all the way down?
Not all McClure Road, no.
Oh, not McClure Road. I'm saying from McClure to Seventh Street. I'm saying Seventh, all the Seventh Street.
Yeah, and all the little tie-in roads we'll tie into.
Okay, so, yeah.
I know previously we have had quite a few delays, but I'm just asking in new projected or estimated completion date so I can kinda have my radar out.
Really like to be done by the rainy season. So...
The rain is May.
It says like April.
I understand.
So you said by May.
We're trying to be, okay, I don't think we will. So probably end of May, the project should be complete, I think.
And, and do you anticipate any change in work orders?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Thank you for the update.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I have James Washington for Barfield Highway, Russell, to speak on Barfield Highway.
All right. James Washington, Russell Construction. Got any questions?
Yeah, we had plenty of them earlier.
The, the desk work on the desk. I've been trying and trying. I know it's bad out there. Like I said, two weeks ago, we're working to get out of the water trucks up here, finishing up another job. I should have asphalt paved tomorrow. That should free up the big water truck to get it up there. Kinda just piggybacking off of what I was talking about last week. I'll say two weeks ago. But that's, that's the most pressing thing for me to get dusted up. I know the rainy season is coming. A little bit last night didn't do no justice to the road, but just like, still working on it. But outside of that, I have everything.
Okay, I know PBSO is gonna be assisting, but there was a comment earlier by one of the residents, the possibility of having some type of temporary speed bumps because of the speed of the traffic going through there.
We talked about it a little bit in-house, but nothing that we like moved on. I wasn't privy to the conversation with, with the county. What, what did that entail? Did they say that, they say we wanna do anything? Or is it okay for us to do that? Because we can put the speed bumps out there. The thing is, I don't know if that's gonna help because even with the road and the condition that it's in, people still hauling tail through there, like with no regard for their own cars. So we can do that, but I don't, I don't know if it's gonna help.
But it won't hurt though. I would think if we able to do it, I would hope that we would try to move forward.
I'll get a talk with my superintendent here tomorrow and see if we can get something arranged. Because we're looking at, like, I'm sure you all see that we're putting curb in on the east side. And just FYI, I came out last week, talked to most of the residents on the east side of the road, letting them know what was going on. Kinda jumping, piggybacking off of what my superintendent did about two weeks ago. But letting them know that, hey, it's gonna be a temporary inconvenience because we have to come in and put this curb in. We'll give them a temporary driveway to allow them access. But I kinda just did that to ease things over with them because, you know, there's a lot going on out there.
I have a question.
When do you think you would be paving that so we can? I know you have to put the asphalt in order to match up to the, the curbing. When do you anticipate the asphalt to be going down at least so it can help cut the driveway for the residents that do live on, on there? You know, like just a timeframe? Because I have been out there today and I saw where you did have the cut.
Put the temporary, you know, we put the little temporary cuts out there. We're kinda like hesitant on doing that because it extends out in the road, kinda producing that speed bump effect. But I just didn't want anybody to come down the road late night and run like a bad L and, you know, something happen. But, but as far as asphalt, I'm projecting like hopefully two months. We're still looking for some approval on some change orders to come through so that we can get Johnson Davis out. I went ahead and put them on the schedule for the first of next month, kinda in anticipation of us getting these cost changes approved. I just wanna at least have a slot for them so that we can kinda hit the ground running when we do get approvals.
Are we, are we, are we getting sidewalks on both sides of the street?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it all new sidewalks? Or you're using some of the old sidewalks with new sidewalks?
You get an all-new sidewalk, all-new curb, all-new driveway. And with that being said, one of the other things that I talked with the residents about was the right-of-way. Because some of the residents are under the impression that their yard extends all the way to the road. So I just wanna, you know, being transparent, like, you know, I had to have that conversation and say, hey, the city owns this much of your yard from these stakes that we had surveyed. You know, letting them know that, you know, we're not, we're not we, but you all aren't taking their property, that this property is owned by the city and they allow you to use it as somewhat of a courtesy until the road needs to get extended, expanded, whatever it is. So, you know, I explain it to them, just don't put anything out here that you don't want taken out eventually because the city has every right to come through and remove whatever is in the right-of-way.
The right-of-way is part of the driveway, isn't it?
Seven feet in.
Are there any provision in assisting the residents with maybe...
Car wash?
Fixing, buy up the fence that was removed?
So with that, that, that wouldn't necessarily be on us. That's something that they would have to come to you all and have that conversation about. Because again, their, their property is being placed in your right-of-way. So like we had a, like that sign that was out there in front of the medical center on the west side of the road, like we had to remove that in order to come back in and put the sidewalk and the curb in. So, you know, DOT had line items for some of the stuff, like mailboxes being replaced. So all the mailboxes that we had to remove, we have a line item in our contract to go ahead and replace those. But, you know, fencing, shrubbery... Um, but, you know, fencing, shrubbery, things like that, uh, no, we don't have anything in there saying that, you know, they can be compensated by us, that they have to come to you all.
So any, anything that's encroaching in the, in the rightway, the city's rightway, um?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's on them. We give them a courtesy, uh, call or one knock on, knocking on doors, talking with them, letting them know that, hey, we're gonna be coming through here in the next amount of days. Uh, it's your all's responsibility to, you know, get this out of the rightway if you wanna keep it. If not, you know, we're gonna come through and take it out so that we can build the project.
So how many days are you, are you actively working now?
We're working every day, we're working every day.
Every day, what hours?
Uh, six, four-ish, sometimes we stay out a little bit later depending on if we have loads of material coming in. So, but we're working full, four days, five days a week.
You still estimating the, the end time when?
Uh, it's gonna, I said this, um, right now, it'll be some, tentatively, tentatively for sometime next year depending on the approval of the COs. As long as we don't have any other, uh, uh, conflicts or anything like that, you know, we should be streamlining, stream, streamlining to be out, you know, sometime first of the year. But right now, the project schedule that I have pushes out to like summer next year. But I'm just hopeful that it won't take that long if we can go ahead and get everything moving forward. Because like, like you see us out here right now, we are working somewhat with a skeleton crew, doing what we can with what's in front of us. Once Johnson Davis gets out, then we can come back in, once they get the sanitary sewer and the drainage put in between fourth and third, then we can fall back and start putting the curb and driveways back there which will allow us to connect Fourth Street to Second Street on board with asphalt. So it's just a process and we can't put the cart before the horse anymore than what we have been doing because to a certain degree, like, we've been shooting ourselves in the foot trying to produce what we can even under the situation, so.
All right, well, the only thing I could tell you is that they still want you to please water more times a day. Because if, if, you know, if you think about it, all that dust, if you were to live there, I mean, even with the windows closed, the dust is really bad inside. The houses are really close to the road anyway, you know, they're not that far from the road. And that whole road is just, just dust. So it is, it is kind of, you know, impeding for them. So if you could try to do it a little bit better, they will appreciate that.
We will, we will, and I've been talking to my guys out in the field, so like I said, it'd be a lot better here in the next two weeks when I can get that.
Because they're even asking for pressure washing the houses and the cars, so.
But we know government, you know, doing construction, there's gonna be a little inconvenience and dust. That's even when you work on your own home, you know, there's always a little, little inconvenience and dust. And we know that this is a, right, and we know this is a.
People's doing it more times and they.
I agree with the watering and the rain and all, all of that, but, you know, and the process of getting the road done.
I think next month, I think next month, you know, everyone would be in a lot better position, you know? I think temperaments would have been tempered, you know, here in the next month.
Yeah, because everybody could deal with it, but dealing with it for two years, you know, that gets a little, you know, so that's, that's the only thing.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for that update. You continue with the other projects if you will.
Okay, just, um, one quick thing. Um, we, someone spoke earlier about, um, the notices. We did a town hall two years ago, March the first, and we did a town, a virtual town hall. So everyone knew what was going on as well as passing out the flyer, as well as the groundbreaking so that people were able to come out, voice their opinions, give whatever they wanted to say. Um, and the difference between when someone mentioned about the paving on South Lake, South Lake and Bacon Point are state roads, that was paving. There's a total difference between paving a road and the reconstruction. We're having complete reconstruction, a new road put in. Um, to Project 647, the old house, house has been demoed. Uh, the two trees that align with Bacon Point Road have been taken down. Unfortunately, today, part of the tree limb hit a FPNL li- line and kinda not, got powerful a little while, but they got it back up and running. And so.
Six hours.
Yeah, just, just a couple hours. Um, but they got it back up and running and so the one tree that's left, they, they will be working on getting that down, so.
It's not about power line, is it?
No, 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 they should be good. Um, also, so, uh, there will be an RFP that will be coming out for MLK Phase One. And that RFP will be out March the thirty first and it'll be advertised in the Palm Beach Post.
And that is for what?
That is for MLK Phase One, the MLK Parking Improvement Project.
What is the phase?
That's the two seventy, two fifty, the twenty thousand comes from us.
Yeah, but I mean, what are they doing, yeah?
It consists of the pavilion, LED lighting, playground equipment, um, parking, that, those are the task items. That is, uh, as part of that, that, uh, funding.
What happened, what were supposed to have, like, uh, like a trail?
There's a walking trail in there as well.
A walking trail with the exercise stations?
Yes, all that falls up under those task items.
And then you're gonna do lighting and you're gonna do a pavilion?
Yes.
All that with two seven?
Mm-hmm, that's what's in there, yes ma'am. Um, and one thing, when we went to Tallahassee, someone spoke in reference to demulching funding. Um, Palm Beach County did go to Tallahassee for Palm Beach County Day. And so they had a conversation, the county had a conversation in reference to demulching funding. So they're hoping that we get demulching funding that comes to the county and hopefully will trickle out to us. So that will assist with Glaze Citizens Villa, us being able to demulch that if we get enough funding for that. And that is the end of my?
McClure, McClure Road.
McClure Road. So we're, I had, last week, I think it was last, last week, I spoke with Palm Beach County. Um, so they started identifying the water lines, utilities that run along McClure that will impact anything along McClure that needs to be replaced so that when we get ready to start moving with design, they're in on the conversation. So the next step is to start working on the design with, along with Palm Beach County. And there will be an ILA with the county for McClure project.
So McClure is a total reconstruction also?
Yes, ma'am, so it will basically just be, be the same as Barfield Highway. It will be a completely new road with new, uh, utilities going down, sewer lines and all of that.
Is that gonna require two engineers?
Yep, so it will require an engineer, it will require a contractor. So CEI as well as the contractor. So it's three parts to that funding from FDP. Design, CEI, and construction.
Okay, so when you say design, design is an architect or an engineer?
Architectural engineer. The design is done by whether he is a PE, a principal engineer that designs the project.
So he's the one that's supposed to have all the I's dotted and all the T's crossed so that the MDI.
What's the MDI?
I mean, the DEI or what was the other one?
CEI.
The CEI doesn't have to come back and keep asking for change in work orders.
So, again, that is a road that has never been constructed.
Exactly.
And as long as they are in unison with Palm Beach County and the, all the exploration and do what they need to do, but no one can guarantee that nothing has gotten, no change orders will come before you all. I can't promise that at all.
Okay, so the, the original, the one that's the engineer that's gonna do the design, he's gonna do both the water, the, the county part and the city part, the reconstruction and the water.
That's why we're having the conversation now. That's why we started at the beginning with Palm Beach County in the conversation and to remain throughout so that they are working in unison.
Yeah, because, because I wanna make sure that, you know, they know because that road, just like Barfield Highway, has not been worked on for over forty years. So a total reconstruction, you might as well say, there's no road and we're building it new. So make sure from the get, you know, so we don't have to go through change in work orders.
Yes, ma'am, that has been.
And quickly, Ms. Allen, what is the start date that we project to start on that road? I know we have two extension already and I don't know what's the deadline or the, the extension dates, but I'm just wondering when we, we can get started.
So as soon as we, like I said, we started with the conversation last week and I'm trying to schedule, um, Palm Beach County and FDOT together so we can start to have the next conversation. And then when I come back on the twenty eighth, I'll give you the exact dates because hopefully I'll have design and a better idea. But I don't, and I don't remember the exact, um, extension timeline.
Okay, thank you.
How long does it take for a design?
It just depends on what the project look like, but it's a shorter road, so that's a good thing.
Oh, no, but we've been hearing about the design for a while now.
Well, you have to remember that we were still having some pickups with our, um, engineer record, so. When we come back on the twenty.
Are we still using the same engineer record?
That, right now it's still WGI. And I'll let Mr. Lucas extrapolate on that, but. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now we move to the mayor's report, and I'll be brief. I'd like to request that we cancel our March twenty eighth City Commission meeting due to the City Commission participating in the NLC Congressional Conference in Washington DC. And I entertain a motion if this is desired of the majority of the commission to do so.
Mayor, I make a motion that the, uh, March twenty eighth meeting be canceled.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the cancellation of our March twenty eighth regular scheduled City Commission meeting. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Vab?
Yes. I believe and I think we all do that the City of Pohokee held a very successful and productive Palm Beach County Day uh, in Tallahassee. We had a chance to speak with, uh, quite a few of our legislative, uh, representatives to try to solicit, uh, assistance and help and, and support for our two legislative projects we have submitted this year. So I think we all did a great job in going up there and navigating for our city, which was a great thing. I also like to congratulate Principal Denard on being the school district principal of the year and also to Pohokee High School for having a one hundred percent graduation rate. And hopefully at our next City Commission meeting, which the current one is being canceled, but the following one, we can present him with a proclamation uh, on behalf of the City Commission. Also, I'd like to, again, and like we all have done, congratulate, uh, Tasha Becker, uh, the new branch manager for PNC Bank, the Pohokee branch. Uh, we also like to, uh, have a proclamation prepared for her at our next, uh, City Commission meeting so we can present that to her. Also, we have asked and will be doing restarting our Lawn of the Month, the Mayor Gold Hammer and Nail Award, and our Two Business of the Month. Uh, we wanna get that back on track so we can recognize, uh, folks who have, uh, did well with their lawn and helped beautify our community. And of course, the Mail, Mayor Gold Hammer and Nail Award is for someone who have did some substantial improvement either to their home structure or their businesses. And we pull that information only through permits that have been filed so it can substantiate what they have done to increase their business, uh, or their home. Also, the City Commission, I would like for us to direct request our city manager to do a, conduct a infrastructure risk assessment. And I think we have already started that, just need to formalize it. And one of the reasons we want to do this or have it done, I certainly, uh, think is a great idea, is for potential, to identify potential hazard, hazard, uh, harmful, uh, conditions to, so we can prioritize the, uh, projects that we need to have done. We've talked about the potholes in the roads and the missing, uh, uh, storm drains and some other things that can cause some serious harm to residents. My mom even fell on a broken sidewalk or uneven sidewalk and she's at ninety. So I know if elderly person can fall, a lot of other folks can fall. So we wanna make sure that's a priority that we could have a list in those areas. Similar to what we did with the, the housing, not housing, but the property that the city owned. I don't know, I don't recall that gentleman, but he did a great job in identifying, uh, these structural damage or, uh, assessment of our own property here in the City of Pohokee and gave us analysis of what needed to be corrected or what needed to be done to improve those, uh, property that the city, uh, currently own. Also, in, 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 with, uh, the celebration of our centennial, I think this commission, not this current one, but one previously had asked that the mayors of the city be placed in the, uh, city chamber here. We have taken, uh, got some samples of other pitches in city halls that have their mayors there. So I would like for the city just to move forward, uh, with that project. And, uh, it can be designed in a way that those quotas of individuals can be slid right into it, like on a little sleeve, I think some of y'all may have saw something like that. It got a border and the picture just go right in there. They're gonna be straight and even and you have a, uh, some type of plaque that would, uh, indicate the year of service for those individual mayors. And I will say that a former mayor currently here in the City of Pohokee hasn't been health-wise, been doing very well. I think he'd been off and working now for at least six months, that's, uh, JP Sasser. So just something to recognize, you know, your former mayors would be a great, uh, thing that we can do for the city.
Is it for the living mayor or for deceased mayors? You talking about all the mayors in the past mayor?
Yes, all that we could, uh, get a photo of and identify.
Put them where, outside of the?
It'd be right here, like, right on this wall here, almost in the middle of there.
Or on outside, like where we have, uh, or like here where we have Singaterre.
Yeah, Singaterre is the first African-American mayor. Ms. Wilkinson was the first female mayor and of course, uh, Duncan Padgett was the first mayor of the City of Pohokee. But the picture that we're talking about, it's not gonna be that big, we're only talking about maybe an eight by ten.
Eight by ten.
Uh, Mr. Lucas and Tucker looked at it, I think, uh, Commissioner Bowden looked at it. I have a picture of what I'm envisioning how the mayors would be set up so it's not anything that would be too elaborate or too, uh, overbearing, I'll put it that way, uh, that we can't do properly. And I certainly would pitch in and give my input and ideas on how we can actually pull this off, uh, relatively fine. Also, lastly, the, I just wanna just share some information. I know that PBSO indicated even in our communication with them, I think Major Coleman mentioned a fact about sometime it appears that the city doesn't follow, uh, rubber rules and order. And he hasn't been the first person to indicated that, I think. Uh, two of the legislators up there in Tallahassee say the same thing. But I don't think that's the cases for us following rubber rules and order. We may veer a little bit, but we normally, and we do have our city attorneys sitting here that not gonna keep, not gonna have us steer anywhere from rubber rules or order. That's our guideline that we use, so I, I kinda. So I kind of disagree with that, but I know some of the reason behind that. So I'm just sharing just quickly some of these things I have here. According to Robert rules or order, the steps of handling a motion, which is the most important, one of the most important things we can do under Robert rules and order. First thing is to make a motion. Second is to have someone second a motion. And then the motion should be stated by the chair. Then you debate the motion. You do that prior to ask that the debate need to, second, and a motion need to be made prior to debating it because it may at some point not even need be necessary to move forward on that or discuss it if it's not second or first. Put in a motion to a vote and then announcing the results of it. Can a chair refuse a motion? The chair can refuse a motion to take a regular motion. There are certain special motion that the chair must take on the parliamentary procedures. And usually the reason a chair would refuse a motion is that it is out of order. For example, a board member make a motion before the previous motion has been resolved. Now, there is a time you can make a motion before previous motion has been resolved is when you making an amendment to a motion. That would be taken prior to the motion that was first put on the floor for consideration. According to Robert rules or order, motion that conflict with the law or the bylaws could be refused by the chair. Motion that repeat the same question on the same day. Somebody come in, we'd already discussed this, and then they come up with another motion identical or very similar to it, that could be out of order and not put forth by the chair if that's the case. Motion that conflict with an already adopted motion. Motion that operate outside the scope of art, of the object of the organization, objective of the organization, sorry, but need to put on my glasses. Motion that conflict with or repeat motion held in committee and motion that appears to be incorrect, frivolously or rude. Discussion. Discussion on board meeting is not a conversation. It is structured to be fair and efficient. In order to achieve this, the chair must recognize people. The chair called for each person to speak in turn. The chair has a duty to be fair in this and follow the rules. People may not just blunt out when they feel like it is appropriate. Don't allow people at the meeting to talk over one another or to interrupt or to dominate the discussion. The most important rule for discussion during meeting is that no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken. This is critical. And that's in my mayor's report. Thank you. Next city manager report.
I'll be brief as well, the mayor. On my report, on March 6th, we, I met with Harry Segal. He's one of the owners of the Parker Building or at 170 West Third and 169 Adams Place. I went out with staff, Commissioner Gonzalez, the building official, Jetson Delaney, and we toured this facility. It was not in good shape, sir. Basically, there's a, obviously, property maintenance, lack of repairs to the property. Background on Friday, February 24th, code enforcement cited both properties and building official got involved and deemed the property as a nuisance per section 17-181 Code of Ordinance with order to vacate by Monday, February 27th, 2023 by 5:00 PM. In this case, we have met again with him after we did the tour and we basically tried to come to a consensus, but it has to be approved by the magistrate. The next date would be April 12th. Some of the things on the table was to extend 10 working days, allow him to fix up some of the units and move people out to start working on a vacated building. Penalize them more money and eventually, I guess our goal would be to foreclose. But it's only so much I can really give until he signs to these things that he talked about on Monday, the 6th.
Now, those residents, the majority of them are still there? They all have moved or with his family?
No, sir, they, for the most part, they're all there. We've had several social services go out to the residents. They don't want to move out of Pahokee. In speaking with one last Friday, she was like, I'm willing to move. And I guess Palm Beach County Services, Committee Services is going to come back out this week and start helping them. And then we're defining the help that you guys have put in place for the $25,000, up to $1,000 for relocation. So hopefully this week we, you know, go out as a team and visit and see where they're at while we try to work out some type of agreement with Mr. Segal.
Question, with that note of, out there with the Palm Beach County Services, they offered, I don't think we have to put money up for them because they offered the residents that's, that's real residents their first, last and security once they find the place that they can move. They offered the help, so I don't see why we have to put more money into it because they, I'm just saying because they did offer, I was there with the, you know, someone from James Green's office, and they did offer to just get their name and once they locate a place, they will come in and pay their first, last and security of them getting into the place. The problem I think we have out there, why they want to move, a lot of them are just walkers. A lot of them, most of them that's in there are not rent payers. They're just there. So I think that's the, that's the problem that we have, have with the building, why they don't want to move. But even the service still trying to help them find somewhere to go. But I think that's the problem. Most of them in there, they just, they just moved in without anyone knowledge. So they're just there.
I have a question, like legally, what, what are we doing about it? Because legally, you know, you put your, your notice and the owner has to follow whatever the city is, I mean, the building is condemned, you give them by law whatever time you got to give them and after that, that's it, that's it. I mean, there is no choice because this, when it's condemned, it's a health issue. So, I mean, it's like, there ain't too much choices.
Well, in order to get to that final movement, we got to have noted things from the magistrate because we can't do anything and ask them, our enforcement here, to help remove people until it's official in writing. Or Mr. Segal spends money and vics everybody. Then they have to.
It's his responsibility, but, but the city goes after the property owner. The property owner has to take care of his part of the deal. I mean, it's not for the city to go and work on everything. Is that not right, Ms. Weeks?
Commissioner, from, through the mayor, from my understanding, the city is working to take these issues through a special magistrate process, which is set in April. And they are trying to work with the property owner. And what I'm imagining is that the city is looking to broker some type of a process that would be agreeable, that the special magistrate will then put in an order and that would be binding, that would be the binding notice that you're talking about. So I think a couple of different issues are going on here and, and we're, you know, working with the city to hopefully make sure that the next special magistrate process is productive. So if, with that, if you'll just let us put a pin in that and maybe talk with you all offline about it.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, that, that there is a process, but you know, I know that ones, and they want to work with them, but the process as far as legality has to start. And then while that's happening, that's an incentive for him to, you know, work with you or.
Just a couple more things, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I just, the lights on the south end of the pier are back on. I got like maybe two out, but they got to change the bulb. But we had a new timer placed in it so that the lights go out when the sun comes out and everything. So we're working out the bugs. Also, I'm looking at getting the prices for the north end and the parking lot so we can see how much that costs to get those lightings corrected as well, mayor. Also, just real quick, event's coming up, Coffee with the Cop with these guys tomorrow, 8:00 AM Papa Jimmy's, right guys?
Right.
All right. Next meeting, I guess, will be eight Tuesday, April 11th. And next event, I guess up there is April 1st, April's Fools', but it's Love Pahokee Day, Commissioner Park. The event that was there today went successful with the.
Coalition of Immoculie Workers.
Yes. Went well. They were just passing through and went on to their next stop.
Well, what, can you tell us what that was about? Somebody called me about it and I didn't know nothing was going on.
So the, the event that took place this morning was with the Coalition of Immoculie Workers. It wasn't a city sponsored event, but the city did assist with hosting them in our city for their march. They marched on behalf of, in summary, they marched on behalf of immigrant workers' rights. There was a situation that happened with some workers in the, in the fields, for lack of better phrasing, and they were held against their rights, they were exploited there and they were trafficked. And so the situation was litigated. The owners of the farm, from what I understand, was prosecuted and the farm workers that suffered those injustices were freed and received services. So they just wanted to bring awareness to these types of conditions that many immigrant farm workers are faced with. And so from there, they started their walk. It's a walk from Joe Lewis and it goes on into Palm Beach County, throughout Palm Beach County, and it's several miles a day and it's through four to five days or so and they do, I think it's something like six to eight miles a day.
And this would go to Mr. Lucas. An event we have a large gathering like that and I'm not, I know we didn't sponsor it, but they're in our city and we are aware of it. It's just courtesy, we just need to know as commissioners, because we're going to get some calls. I got two calls this morning. I had no idea of what was going on, of what we're carrying. So if we get the information, some kind of way, share and just let us know, it would be helpful.
Okay, yes, sir.
Do you want me to go on with the other?
Ah, I think that covered it. I just wanted to remind you guys, next Wednesday is Palm Beach County Days in Royal Palm Beach. I'll get that out to you.
Palm Beach League of Cities.
Palm Beach League of Cities luncheon. And then mayor's ball, April 1st as well. We secured a table for that event.
PBSO food distribution.
Then, yes. Go ahead. You got that to tell them?
So PBSO food distribution, it starts at 10 o'clock. We're doing it at MLK? We're doing it at MLK Park. Volunteers are welcomed. You're more than welcome to contact PBSO and/or the city and we'll help coordinate those efforts as well. This distribution is open to the entire city, so please tell Lottie Dottie and everybody.
We'll have what day, what time?
It's the 28th of March. That's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
I believe it's a, it's a Tuesday and it's at 10:00 AM at MLK Park and there's a flyer for it.
And we in Washington, y'all, so if we don't show up.
I haven't got the flyer yet.
So hold that thought for one second. Go back to the Immoculie Workers March. Just expect, because tomorrow is day two and it's the last of the days in the late, so it's a four-day march total. Day two, like I said, tomorrow's the last of the days in the late, but do expect some traffic issues. We are shutting down Connors Highway again, I think just South Manhattan Highway. And then once they get to State Road 8, there is a portion of State Road 8 that is going to be shut down from Connors East. So that way the marchers have a safe path and whatnot. So like I said, if there's anybody that, if you start getting phone calls about people not being able to get Connors, get on Connors Highway like they were today, that's what's going on. So it's, but after day two, there will be no traffic delays. Days three and four go from essentially Royal Palm Beach and out to the city of West Hall where we handed off to them.
And as Ms. Eiffel stated earlier, we have Let's Move Campaign. That's, it's a joint partnership with the city along with its organization and it's on the 15th, which is tomorrow. And then we also have Invasion of the Muck Car and Bike Show, that's on May 13th. So that, that's the community event. And then during Cinco de Mayo, we have a rights restoration event going on simultaneously with Cinco de Mayo. And that is a partnership with Florida Rule Legal Services. And that's also an initiative that Commissioner Gonzalez has been fighting for, pushing towards the forefront of the city's endeavors. Then we have Commissioner Baxter's Town Hall and that's at Seminole Ridge High School tomorrow at 6:30.
And that's important because it's about, like, the people that, that own.
Code enforcement, things like that.
Well, it's got to do with trucks.
Yes.
And not being able to park it in their, in their area.
You mean like semi trucks?
Semi trucks, yeah, exactly.
They're, the county wants to come this way and do that. And this area, you know, it's migrant area. A lot of people own their own trucks and own their own home and park it in their, in their home.
Miss? It concludes my report, sir.
Okay, question though.
Yes, sir.
Could you include at doing your next report on the status of condemned buildings in Pahokee? We got at least three major one, two of them, I think all three of them real old South Lake riding type of areas. So if I could follow down, I don't know what the status is and what course of action are we taking on those buildings? Either get them removed or at least put some type of lien where we can at least own the property once they are taken down, so.
And mayor, not just that one, even from what the other young lady said tonight, I agree. She did, out of Eastlake Village, that is Eastlake Village, I'm glad, right? Yeah. There is about two homes there. I know they've been for years. I remember the one that you first going on to the right, I've been after that for, for years, but it is like covered. It needs to be, I don't know how we could do it, whether to get demolition dollars or what have you through the city or where we at with those. Those went on the demolition list for, for a while out there. And, and Mr. City Man, on your report also, you. And, and Mr. Cityman, on your report also, you have on there, you discuss about the, uh, of the, just some information on annexation. Can you give an update on, because you had it on your report?
Well, yes, but, uh, I, I have to do a, uh, a request for services or proposal or, um, to qualify. I just couldn't move forward without, um, seeking services for someone to, to help us with annexation. So, before I did a workshop and then that, whoever is chosen, then they would help us put together those things.
But prior to that, is there anyone that you can call in? I know in the past, in the past, and Mayor, you might can, we had people to come in and talk about annexation from the county, from different, is there anyone, even before you get to that point, to where you can have people come in and just talk about annexation? I know county came in a couple of times before and talked about the, how annexation worked, the pros and cons of it and all of that, is it, before you get to the point of what you're saying?
Okay. Now, Mayor, you, you gave me direction on Town Hall, and then we have the, the financial thing. Can I combine annexation with, with the financial for, for like next month or, or by May?
That's, that's fine with me. I'm a simple problem.
I'm gonna reach out to the county tomorrow and see what, um, I can get them to help me as well.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the city attorney report.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, pardon me, pardon me, I'm sorry. Um, just Great American Cleanup, that's part of April, and that's super important for us to take part in. Okay, April twenty second, thank you.
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Mayor, um, we do have, as the manager mentioned, uh, a, a special magistrate hearing coming up. I'm planning to attend that. We're also moving forward in making a presentation to the special magistrate about, um, one property in particular and demolition activity, uh, demolition that can, um, occur with that. The magistrate wasn't aware, um, and I did point out in the last hearing that he does have the authority to look at some of these things. He said that he, um, didn't know, but he would look at that and he appreciated, um, it being brought to his attention, but needs evidence. Um, and so, we're planning on giving the magistrate some evidence that will, um, help to, uh, support a decision that will hopefully address some of the, um, issues that you're having. Now, the second issue would be, um, a lot of times you have these orders in place and they're only good for so long, so moving at the right time to do it when you actually have the funding set aside and in place to demolish, because if you get an order that says demolition has to occur within thirty days, you need to figure out where that money's gonna come from. So, that's something I'll be talking with the city manager about and when would be, you know, the best time to move forward with some of those things. Another thing that I wanted to just quickly bring to your attention is, um, earlier, you all were talking about legally procuring, um, um, services for grant writers, and I just want to bring to your attention, particularly the manager, that there is, the Florida League of Cities now has a grant assistance program, and it's online, and they are partnering with, uh, a company called E-Civis to provide, uh, floor, all Florida municipalities access to a database with more than, than nine thousand track grants, and this is a really, um, great benefit for members, like the city of Pahokee, and, uh, and we should really take advantage of this, because it helps not only identify, um, grants, but also helps you apply for it, it gives you the tools to make the findings for it, it allows members to leverage this nationally professional database of all kinds of, um, you know, grant information. So, you may even look at that and see what, what you can do even before you, um, put it out, but that is just the real benefit that the Florida League of Cities is, um, if, uh, uh, offering for free to its members, so with that, I'll, I'll, I'm finished.
Yes, a quick question. In keeping in line with that same train of thought also, uh, most lobbyists assist their municipalities with grant writing and identifying grants, so if we decide we're gonna go back out for FP for a lobbyist, we need to include that, maybe part of the, uh, service that they would provide to us. Uh, I, I don't wanna point, but I mean, we're paying like five thousand dollars a month for a lobbyist, that we don't get that type of service, the draft writing part and identifying draft. I mean, really helping to put it together too, that's something we can look at doing. And lastly, uh, we, we had a, after our Centennial Board sunset, it, we established a recall for the establishment of a special event board. And I thought that we had put that together, we got the, the, the thoughts and the input from the commission, but, um, it was my understanding with speaking with the city clerk and the city manager, that board haven't been composed yet, and one of the things that was talked about, whether or not we wanted a board versus a committee, a committee on the sunset, where board stayed pretty much permanent. I, I, I vision it would be something similar to the Centennial, just for a special event. You don't necessarily have to utilize them. If you think we got capable staff then for those particular project, the, the special event board would need to be in place during that particular project, but if they need assistance of that, uh, board, then they're ready as volunteers to help organize and, and work with our city staff in creating, uh, special events. And I don't want that to get lost. If we don't have that board, I would certainly like to see us move forward in trading it. I thought we had traded it, but I kinda get senior moments and I don't remember whether we created it one or not, but I thought we did. To your knowledge, City Attorney, did we ever create that board? Have we discussed?
You did discuss it, and, um, I think the, the manager's office is going to, um, put it together, exactly what, no? Well, the last that I heard was that there was going to be, um, it just wasn't enough information, I had questions about it, and I think we were just, we were delaying it until another time where they had more information, and maybe this will, it will be on your next agenda.
And I'll put this out there too, during that conversation, they mentioned if I could maybe have, uh, uh, Economic and Community Development Director appointing boards. I don't like that idea, I'd tell you that upfront. I think our commissioners know our community, and they should, and hopefully they will select people that they feel that will serve on those boards and serve actively on them. And if we got boards that's inactive or members that are not serving, then we need to reappoint folks when, when a board member don't attend meeting and participate the way we feel they need to.
So, a couple of, Mayor, a couple of different, um, issues that come up, and one was, not even issue, but a couple of different discussion points that come up, and one was whether that board was supposed to be the same board that was the Centennial Board and just, you know, and that board again, or whether it was supposed to be some other board that you all had before and morph out of that, but I, I guess we're just waiting for more information.
It was voted on for the Centennial Board.
Okay, so...
And because board have terms, they won't be there forever, so the term may be a two-year term or three-year term, but initially, that's Centennial Board, because it was already in place and did a great job, I feel, that we did, when we did discuss it, the consensus was that the Cent- Cent- Centennial Board would be the Special Event Board initially, and then we'll...
So, I think, but we have been talking about it, so I think we may have enough information and do a, get a staff report done and get it, get it done for your next meeting.
Do a board.
Centennial Board.
More Special Event Board.
Special Event Board, to be the members of the Centennial Board.
Right. Initially.
Okay.
What would be a special event?
A special event would be any event like similar items that we had for the Centennial, you know? Uh, even the Christmas Parade, that's a special event. These different things that, uh, Ms. Washington have listed, uh, that coming up, that the city would be sponsoring and, 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 and doing, those are special event. So, be any, any, any special event...
They want the same, the same board to, to do all the activities from the city?
No, and, and, and again, it, it gonna come before, from the commission and the Economic Development Staff, whether or not we want their participation in that particular event. They don't automatically have a blanket, uh, charge to say, these are the nine items of special event we would like you all to have some control over, some input, we'll be assisting in, in, in making that determination.
They're supposed to be advisories, but they just come and like really brings what it is.
It's the same thing, Special Event Advisory, it's the same, they are advising us.
It, it seemed like is their word is a law, but whatever.
Next item on the agenda is the future agenda items of the commission, if any. Any commissioner have any, uh, items they would like to see placed on the agenda?
Do I have to say about the proclamations I wanna do?
Go ahead.
Do I have to, do I have to put it?
Yeah, this is the time when he, uh, they wanna know.
Okay, I wanna, I, I wanna, um, do proclamations for the honoring the football coaches that have been, uh, football coaches practically all of their life, for their, their time and their participation in the youth's life in the community. They've taken, um, their time off their family. A lot of them have coached for the recreation department. At the same time, they coached for the high school, and that worked like six days a week, practically all their lives. So, I would like to honor.
So, we do a proclamation, are you gonna be giving?
Each one of them.
Each individual proclamation?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a motion to add...
How many is this, there, you know, how many? How many is, you're talking, how many?
We're talking about all the ones that, that, um, were part of the recreation and...
Of here or in high school, I'm saying, what areas you're talking?
Where, where?
Like you got Coach Osborne, Coach Scott, Coach Rick, Coach Jay, Coach Hill, you know, it's a lot of them that have given, you know, most of their time, and they've not only been a coach, they've been a father figure to, to the kids in our community, and they've never been recognized. So, I think it'd be, it'll be good, you know, for us to recognize them for, you know, because they've all made, you know, some, some, you know, positive, um, impact in the kids in the area.
Okay. Are you gonna work with the schools and make sure we can get their names, or you, you already have, and do each other, so we don't miss, so we can give into that? We can always add someone if we even, we happen to miss them.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you know any of them, I like to do the ones, you know, and a lot of them are like, they did both.
No particular years going back, you're gonna go from any and all coaches who have coached the high school as well as parks and recreation? You're gonna try to recognize everyone?
The, I was gonna recognize the, you know, the, the ones that I know, the ones like, when we, when we, uh, won the state championship all those years, a lot of the same coaches were on the same side. Um, I know Coach Osborne, Coach Osborne started here and coached a lot of those kids when they were little. So, most of the kids, you know, in the area were coached by the same coaches. Some of them, you know, coached at the recreation and the high school. But, I mean, if you guys have names, you know, we could have them all together. I would like to honor them, because they, they, they need to be recognized.
Okay.
I don't think no one's ever, you know, done that.
So, let's, let's go ahead with the motion. Is there a second to add this to our future agenda item?
I'll second.
Been moved by Commissioner Perez and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin, that we, uh, do a proclamation honoring and recognizing all the coaches from Pahokee High School or Miller School, including the Recreation Department. Call for question. Here in honor, you ready for a vote roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mayor Bab?
Yes. So, this would be added to our next regular agenda.
So, if you guys, yeah, if you have names and stuff I have to talk to?
And you're putting all the names on the proclamation now?
So, that's gonna be youth and high school football coach?
All, all you can remember, I guess.
And about a coach, yeah.
Okay.
I was talking football, but I mean, they, the coaches here, they, they coach football, basketball, track, whatever, you know, it's the same coaches. So, I mean, that, that's what they do, that, they like it.
So, maybe what we can do is submit the names of all the ones we can remember or recall, or hear, whatever, to the clerk, so they can, she, she can combine them all and have it read.
Some of the ones that I have talked to, I thought, so give me like a little biography, so that I could turn it in, 'cause I know they needed to put on the proclamation, you know, they put a little...
I thought it would be like one standard with all different names with one standard proclamation.
Yeah, it's gonna be a whole lot.
'Cause there's a lot of them doing it like that.
Just listing the name is gonna be a challenge, but...
So, one standard proclamation, but we're all on different names.
But the sentence, it gonna be pretty long if you do it that way. You gotta figure we're talking about at least fifty coaches, I'm just guessing, but it's gonna be a high number.
We could do them at different intervals throughout the year. We could do ten each time if you want.
Yeah, your thought, your ideas, I don't, I don't mind either way. I mean, it just gonna cause some research or some work to kinda get that, the name and then a little bio for each one.
I think it'd be, it'd be more significant than just make a generic one. Maybe we could do it at different, different, you know, we could take ten, five, ten, however you wanna do it, do them, you know?
So, what about just doing one generic one?
And just change the name?
Once a month or every other month, we'll do a ten till we get them all done with the bio on it. Maybe we can do it that way, maybe a little easier.
Yeah, that's okay with me. I just, yeah, I think it's more personal.
Right. Okay. Are there any other commissioners who wanna add some to the agenda, future genators? Okay, here in, now, we'll move to the commissioners' comments for the good of the, and for the good of the order, and we'll start with, uh, Commissioner...
I would just have one announcement for the community, that there's, um, um, they're getting ready for the NEAT grant again, and that's something, um, for application being accepted for the, uh, the NEAT grant, the Neighborhood Engagement and Transformation NEAT grants, and now they went from five thousand to ten thousand dollars a grant. So, that's something that our community that can get involved in with whatever property they wanna do, you know, uh, you know, there are different categories, Neighborhood Purification, Neighborhood Identification, Neighborhood Organizing, Neighborhood Outreach and Capacity Building, Public Safety and Crime Prevention, Community Guardings, it's different category, but they're, they're now, there are, went from five thousand to ten thousand dollars a grant. The application deadline is May twenty fifth, and there's a mandatory meeting on April the fifth that you have to attend in order to be a part of the grant, but it's very good for community engagement that can, again, grant up to ten thousand dollars.
Is that matching?
No, this is... No, this is like a individual, but I was like the one did for the park out in Glacis and Village. Uh-uh, they will give you, you fill the grant out, you just, they'll coach you through it. You can, as many people can get on a committee or whatever and get a grant and do a project. It's not matching.
Since you've mentioned the NEAT grant, we, we really need to try to find some way of doing something out to Glacis and Village, even if it's starting off in benches where the kids can come and hopefully with the, these wifi coming now, it may be free access that they can do their homework or-
Well, like this, this could, you could get like five people on a committee, each one of them do the grant. That's uh fifty thousand dollars. That's, if they can get it, they can put that towards the um whatever project that they go for.
Four years.
Yeah, so it's, it's pretty good.
For it. So maybe, Ms. Adams, we can get some type of an update at our next commission meeting and see what we can brainstorm and come up with.
Well, April fifteenth, you gotta go to the mandatory meeting.
Yeah, go to the mandatory, but at least one person of, of your, of your group has to be at the meeting in order to get the uh, the, the booklet. But there's, but you just have to register by May twenty fifth.
As a city, you could do it?
No, like I can get on there, I can pick people online, like I can pick like four or five people. On a, you can get four or five people, you can get four or five people and do a project. And say you target a project that you would like to do. There's, you know, there's different guidelines that you have to do. Like if you wanna do uh Glacis and Village, one might wanna do Martin Luther King, you know, do something. Somebody wanna do a sculpture, but there, it's good money out there that you can, I know Lake Worth always get it like-
Maybe till we can put it on our webpage, we have to get the word out.
I'm gonna fly, but it was, it was emailed to me, but I can't think of it.
Commissioner Perez?
Um, only thing that I, 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 I'd like to suggest, direct or however you wanna say it, um city manager, whatever uh issues, whatever questions the, the residents have, if we could please have the answer for them on whatever you have available by the next, by the following meeting. Another thing that I'd like to have is, is um, we have, I know the mayor have asked for it and I have asked for it, um, finance report. We wanted it on a monthly basis. We haven't had one in a-
Not quarterly?
Well, I thought it was quarterly.
We asked for monthly and, but you know, if it's quarterly, but we haven't had it.
We just got it.
We, we want a, a detail.
That was a detailed one, you just got it.
The one that he stood there and read?
No, not his, not the PowerPoint, but he gave you, you had a detailed financial report. That was his PowerPoint, but you had a detailed financial report.
Yeah, oh, and that's one thing, the font. I wear glasses and I couldn't even, I had a heck of a hard time reading that and those numbers. So if you could please make it a little, a little bigger, I, I can't see that. Um, and, and I don't know if, if we already have it, but I think that what we should have is an overall assessment of the infrastructure in the city overall. And then tackle each section according to, to the, to the gravity, like the, start from the worst one first. So sooner or later, the entire city has been, you know, updated with infrastructure, especially right now when there's so much money out for infrastructure. This is a time that we, we need to take advantage of it. We're talking sewer, we're talking, you know, roads, sidewalks. The city's in really bad need. And in order to be able to bring a free frog to the area, we need to get our infrastructure in on point. That, housing, and look at schools, and look at the local government. So if we really wanna get serious about it, we need to, we need to start working, you know, on our image. Well, we already talked about uh Parker Building. And, oh, I just wanna, gonna make the, the announcement in Spanish about the food distribution. Para todos los residentes del área de Pahokee, el día veintiocho, que es el martes, marzo veintiocho, a las diez de la mañana, en el parque de Martin Luther King, van estar distribuyendo comida. Así que para todo el mundo que esté oyendo, que por favor que vengan, es el marzo veintiocho a las diez de la mañana. Gracias.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolden?
I'll pass.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion of adjournment.
Yes.
Been moved by Vice Member Mervin, second by Commissioner Perez. Call for question, here in honor, ready for a vote roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Mayor Vab?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at nine forty-five.